Second. Sharon, roll call, please.
Councilmember Alves.
Here.
Councilmember Warnikoff.
Here.
Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Here.
Mayor Derwin.
Here. Thanks, Sharon. Oral communications, this is the time of the evening when anyone can speak about something that is not on the agenda, knowing that we cannot take action or have an extensive conversation. You may speak once up to three minutes. Sharon, would anyone, oh, I see Jeremy's hand up.
Hi, Mayor Derwin, thank you. I wanted to, before we moved into the rest of the meeting, introduce a new feature we have in our Zoom meetings, which is our timer. Sharon, if you could turn it on and time me for a few seconds so people can see. This is an opportunity for people to see how long they have. At times, it's very difficult for us on our phones or using other resources to adequately do this in a way that is fair and equitable for all. So when you're called on to speak, you'll start speaking for a couple of seconds and the timer will come on and you'll see it there. We hope that you pay attention to it and use it. And if you need a reminder, the mayor, myself, or Sharon will remind you that time may be up at that point. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeremy. Sharon, do any members in the community wish to speak?
Rita Comas.
Rita?
Hi, I've noticed that there are many other meetings that have the addition of the timer. I know that the residents have been asking this for this for a while. But can we also have a way to show how many participants are in the meeting, attending the meeting? We see so many people on the screen, which may be more panelists than what we can see, but how many people total are attending the meeting? That would be very, very helpful to, to everyone that is at home right now. And we look forward to, in October, being able to see our fellow residents in the schoolhouse at active meetings. And if that is, I don't know if you can talk about it now, but is that still the plan? Is there a particular date when that will start in October? But we look forward to that. And just like we can see people at the schoolhouse, we would like to see how many residents, how many people, including panelists, are participating in the meetings. Thank you.
Well, I can tell you that there are eight attendees and there are 14 panelists. As to when we'll be in person, I don't believe that's been determined yet. Sharon, are there other folks who'd like to speak? Oh, Sarah, did you want to speak? Oh.
You did.
You.
I apologize. I was just going to add because this, this has come up several times on a variety of meetings I've been on, and I feel like we've done our best to answer the question. The, the fact that you can't see the names of the attendees is a limitation of Zoom, and it's a common platform that many businesses, nonprofits, what have you, use. I'm pretty sure actually I've attended PVNU meetings where it, there was the same limitation where the panelists could be seen, but, but the attendees. And so I just want to be clear, this is a limitation of the technology that we're using. It's a broadly used technology. We wish people could see the names, but the best we can do is share it through the minutes after the meeting.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mayor Derwin, if I might say, I do put the participant count in my box, my little square, instead of my name, it'll say the, and I try and keep it current during the meeting.
Oh, I never noticed that before. Okay, do you see Sharon's box? This is 22 participants. If you write now, 14 are.
Right.
Very, you know. Appreciate it, very much appreciate it. And we wish that more meetings use that function, but very much appreciate it. We very much appreciate Sharon doing that. Thank you.
Alrighty. Okay, are there other folks who'd like to speak, Sharon?
Caroline Vertonghen.
Carolyn.
Good evening. I, I apologize. Again, there is a communication problem. Is this the right time for oral communication?
It is.
Thank you very much, Mayor Derwin. I would like to read a little statement. So, good evening, Mayor Derwin, members of Town Council and staff. As you know, the month of September is the suicide prevention awareness month. The month of October is bully prevention awareness month. For over 10 years, we Portola Valley parents, students, and professionals have disclosed the systemic problems that lead to our mental health crisis and teen suicides. Alcohol and drug are used, are used among our children, are prohibited by law. 10 years ago, we had a problem with marijuana, yet Portola Valley School District now needs more help with an increased variety of drug abuse disorders. It's not no longer just marijuana. It's inhalant-related disorders, opioid-related disorders, cocaine, crystal meth, and the list goes on. It's advertised on their website. We parents and students and professionals have tried to stop the increased drug and marijuana, and drug abuse. Yet every time you told us, you have no purview. We pay for law enforcement officers that are supposed to help public safety. You praise the Captain Corpus for her expertise in mental health. Her contract was supposed to provide a variety of services, and she was supposed to provide the town with quarterly reports, but we have not seen any reports. Now PVSD has partnered with Care Solents, and they quote, "to calm the chaos in mental health." Why do our local students and family need help with an increase in drug abuse disorders and mental health disorders? I've asked you and PVSD this, this question by email, and I hope you will provide us with answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon.
Kristi Corley.
Kristi?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm, I'm just wondering when you revise some of the Town Council meeting wording. If you could put in red what is revised, so we are very clear what was revised, that would be helpful. I noticed this Town Council meeting was revised. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Jeremy, can you tell us what was revised?
Do you want me to do that now, or would you like to do that during consent?
Alright, we'll do it during consent. Good idea. Alright, are there any more, yeah, I think there's another hand up.
Deanna.
Okay.
Got it. Did I, you got it?
Yep.
I would like, I'm here, I'm wrestling a grandchild. I think the timer is obnoxious. I think it is not who we are as a town, and I think the Town Council can easily handle people when they call in to say that you, you've talked enough or whatever. The timer thing in your face is, that's not who our town is. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, are there any more?
There are no more speakers.
Alright, then we will move on to our special presentation. San Mateo County Gun Buyback Program Update. And who is going to introduce this?
I will, just very briefly, I'll hand it over to our two participants, Brad and Danielle, who have a brief presentation. So feel free to share your screen when you're ready. I think you had something, right?
I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Oh, great, thank you. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Danielle Lacampña, and myself and Dr. Brad Silver here tonight from Citizens for San Mateo County Gun Buyback. And sorry, let me close this. So, we, we, we first met you all in Portola Valley in 2018, when you were very generous in supporting our program, and we appreciate that. We'll talk a little bit about that. So we wanted to come back and give you an update of where we're at right now and just let you know about the three gun buybacks that we had in May 2018, December 2018, and December 2019. As you can probably guess, we've been dormant for the last couple of years for obvious reasons of COVID. But we're ready to start again, and as things improve and the county is vaccinated, we realize the need. And so we, we are appreciating being here tonight to talk about it. We started the Gun Buyback Program in 2018 because we were a group of concerned citizens, and we knew that there had been no white-scale gun buybacks since 2013. So we asked to meet, unfortunately, it was right after the Parkland shootings and massacre, and we asked to meet with Sheriff Carlos Bolanos, and he graciously met with us within literally two days of asking for the meeting. And he said, "We'd love to have a gun buyback, but we can't give out money for the guns. So you all have to raise the money if you want to do that." We're, we're more than happy to implement the whole event, to advertise it, to staff it, to destroy the weapons after, the firearms after the event, do everything else procedurally, but we, we're not going to be able to give money out for the, for the guns that are turned in. So we agreed to raise $75,000, just basically on faith that we could, and we weren't, weren't, weren't that confident, but we were very successful. So in 2018, we went to different cities and towns, and again, Portola Valley early supported us and helped us with contributions. Your, your town actually contributed $10,000 and also did a brilliant job of matching citizens in your town that also gave. So the citizens raised 1,875, and you matched that. So we really appreciated you all at that time, and you helped us raise $140,000 in total. We were shocked, but you know, the nation was grieving, and there was a, there was a big need in our county, and, and we kind of thought so, but we were, we were happy to see it, see the, the towns and cities contributing. We, at the gun buybacks, we give out $100 for every handgun, shotgun, or rifle, and $200 for any assault-type weapon. And we focus on the risk of suicide by firearm rather than mass shootings or shootings and general homicide. According to the Coroner's Office in San Mateo County, in the four years from 2016 to 2019, there were 87 deaths by suicide by firearm. Whereas during that same four years, there was only 25 deaths by homicide, although obviously equally terrible and tragic. It, it's sort of an unspoken issue. Suicide is, is something that's really hard for the community to talk about, but it's clearly something that, that impacts our drive in making these buybacks happen. Okay. So the purpose of buybacks are a community service to Ridwin's, home of unwanted or unsecured firearms. We, our group distributes gun locks. We've distributed about, I'm pulling it up, I don't know if you can see it, but we distributed about 100, hundreds of those over the three buybacks, hundreds and hundreds. And people are graciously willing to take them for their, if they have guns or people that they know, then still at home, or people that they know that might need a gun lock. We educate about gun suicide and safety prevention. We hand out resources, we go car to car and talk to people. And we also further buyback research. We give out surveys, anonymous involuntary surveys, and people are more than willing to do them for the most part, the vast majority. And so those help kind of get to know our demographics, whether people are from San Mateo, they just put their zip code, why they're bringing in the gun, whether they have training, things that we keep track of to know that we're, we're reaching people and see how they heard about the gun buyback. So our goal is to also increase the number of gun-free homes overall. Okay. And I'm going to hand off to Brad for the next few slides, and I'll come back on.
Thank you. Can you all hear me? Okay, good. So this, these are just some images from our gun buybacks. As you see, on the top left, you can see a billboard that was, I believe, on 101. Top right, you can see Jackie Spear, who came to one of our gun buybacks. Bottom, Kevin Mullin came to one. See some team members, see some officers. On the bottom left, you see, this is a previous site. This is when we had it at the Redwood City Jail. We don't have it there anymore for logistical reasons, but you can see the cars lined up. So the people drive up, they stay in their car, and, and we greet them just to chat and give them the information that Danielle talked about, the gun locks. Then the officers take the guns out of the cars, and they give them tokens for the money, and then they destroy the guns. So that's how these work. So these are our three gun buybacks. We have, we collected this number of firearms. You can see the three different events, handguns, rifles, shotguns, and assault weapons. At each, at each event, we did have assault weapons. At the bottom, you can see how much money we distributed. The last one was the, the smallest one. We still collected 387 firearms, which I think is a lot. Again, as, one thing I do want to comment on, and Danielle was talking about getting rid of unwanted guns. People tell us all the time, they can't get rid of guns. They have guns, they can't get rid of them. They don't know what to do with them. Police won't take them back. And so people were really grateful that they got rid of these guns that had been sitting in their house that they never wanted, but they really had nothing to do with. So that's, we think that's very important. Okay, these, on this next slide shows three different, three different events, and we asked the Sheriff's Department to pick out the three most awful guns that they collected. And so these are pictures from each of the gun buybacks. These are all assault weapons that are obviously incredibly dangerous. These are things in people's homes in San Mateo County. Okay, so Danielle mentioned the survey. Survey is very important. It's anonymous. It's voluntary. If they don't want to do it, just fine. But so you can see that most of the guns are inherited. 50% of the guns are inherited. These are not guns that people are buying. These are guns that they're getting. Now, some did buy them, but most are inherited. And a lot of times, people didn't want them. They just were given them by a relative, and they didn't know what to do with them. Top right, you can see, do people plan to get another gun? The answer is no. Only one-third plan to get another gun. So we, we are increasing the number of gun-free homes. Okay. Now, of course, since the survey is anonymous, we can't ask a lot of questions about where they're from, because that would make them suspicious. So, but you can see that we, by looking at zip codes, we can tell you that most of the people, 80%, are San Mateo County residents. Because this event is advertised, there are billboards, we can, we do get people from other areas in the, in the Bay Area. Most are San Mateo residents, and so we think, we think we're providing a very good service. Okay, Danielle?
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks, Brad. So I, I wanted to talk a little bit about the postcard. You could see it in the corner there. There's a postcard that San Carlos has been getting, giving out at all of the three buybacks, and it has been very impressive. So wanted to sort of talk that up in case your town would like to try that as well. And so in the first buyback, there were 31 participants from San Carlos, and that's 18.5% of the participants. And 71% mentioned that they learned about it from the postcard. So we know it, it reached people. San Mateo, San Mateo County, if you look at San Carlos versus San Mateo County, San Carlos makes up 4%, you know, San, San Mateo County. So it's, it was a great, a great tool to get people to come, come forward to the buyback and to hear about it. So in subsequent, the, the subsequent two last buybacks, San Carlos also had a great presence, too. A little bit decreased from the initial postcard. But, but nonetheless, it was very, very effective. So we're hoping to reach some towns and cities to try it themselves, to try a postcard, so we could kind of track, you know, whether this is something that across different cities and towns, it's very effective. So San Carlos residents participated eight times that of other cities' participation. And there was also an increase. We're looking for gun-free homes at the end of the buyback, whether people have gun-free homes. And to see, see that overall, so 82% of the San Carlos residents who participate do the postcard then had gun-free homes, households, versus only 54% of the overall participants said they had gun-free households or answered that question. So we think it has a strong correlation. For, for what reason, I don't know. I'm, I don't, don't know exactly how that, how that worked, but it, it was a correlation. And also, the San Carlos residents were more apt to say, first, it was 77% versus 67% that they had no plans to buy another gun. So we'd love to encourage you, if you're willing, the, the Sheriff's Office will give us a, you know, a prototype of a postcard, and that could be available to you, and, and you'd be purchasing it through whatever vendor after they, they make the postcard, and send it to your residents if you're willing. So many, many of the residents felt like it was very easy to participate. If you take out whoever left the question blank, about 80% thought it was very easy or somewhat easy. Most said that it was very easy, actually. So we had very good feedback about the, the event. People, as Brad mentioned, people would tell us heartwarming stories about why they came in. Family members depressed and expresses he wants to die. Somebody lost their 17-year-old stepson to gun violence. Or one person had a new baby in the house. One person found the, the weapons, the firearms in their attic. One person confided in one of us that they had domestic violence in their family. So not only did we hear these kind of things anecdotally, but the survey also speaks to how much they appreciated the event. And there was a lot of talk. We, we tried to make it like a community event. There's a radio station that sometimes comes out. The last two, they came out and played some music. We had a raffle. We, again, we walk the cars and talk to people. The officers are, get a lot of kudos for being, you know, approachable and nice, very helpful. Many people wanted to have it, have it more frequently and have it on a regular basis, which was what we were trying to do, but COVID derailed us. And in 2018, in, in May, we got feedback that people really wanted to see during the holidays. That's why the, the last two were in December, so we take the feedback really seriously. And, and we can't say enough about, we're a group of citizens who do this on our own time and feel extremely fortunate to have partnership with this, the Sheriff's Office, who have been nothing but collaborative and committed to this program. So we just wanted to come here tonight to say we thank you so much for your support in 2018. It's afforded us the last three buybacks. We are doing a very small-scale fundraising right now because we do think after this next buyback that we're hoping to hold in December, and then one in May that will also help out. And we think on good authority that there might be some funding stream that is brought forward through the county to help with the giving, giving out for the guns. But right now, we're still in fundraising. We, we're, I know this is a presentation about how we're doing, but also just want to say, if you happen to be inclined to support us by giving $3,000 to $5,000 for the gun buyback for the two that are coming up in the, in your future, that fund would be matched, whenever you'd contribute, would be matched by San Carlos. So we're very fortunate to have that. Our lead on the gun buyback is changed to Captain Kristen Bell. Christina Bell, sorry. And she is our lead who we're working with right now to get the details all ready for December. And it's going to be December 11th. We'll definitely get word to you out about the event and hope that you will promote it to your residents as well. And really, thank you. We're, we're open to any questions if you had any.
Thank you, Danielle. Does anyone have a question for Danielle or Brad? Do I see a hand up there, Jeff?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I just thank you and congratulations. This is just, I, this is absolutely absurd and safe lives. My one question is, I, I know that just removing handguns from houses significantly reduces suicide risk. Is there anything else, you're sort of, any other steps you're taking? I mean, you mentioned the education. I'm just curious, what else, what else in your experience works or what in the research works on, for, you know, preventing gun suicide specifically?
Brad, do you want to take this?
Sure. Well, you know, it's a really, that's a really good question. We know the safe storage helps. So if people do not want to get rid of their guns, they just need to store them. That's one of the things we talk about. We, inadvertent shootings where little kids get killed are horrible. Suicide, of course, is clearly related to, to young people taking guns out of their home that they know are there and using them. So safe storage is very important. That's one of the things that, that our group focuses on. We talk to these people who are in line about, okay, if you have guns at home, store them. We give them gun locks. So safe storage has really been shown to be very effective. And, and especially with suicide and inadvertent shootings. We know that's definitely effective.
We, we did, speaking of safe storage, we did, one of the raffles, we had a local gun store in San Carlos donate a little safe. And so we raffled that off, and that's the kind of thing, we, we come to meetings like this and talk about it, talk about the suicide stats. We will come to any meeting and talk about the gun buyback program to let people know about it. We think it's really important to have these discussions and normalize that, you know, there's frankly, myself, I had inherited, so to speak, a little bit different than that, but inherited from a family member who could no longer keep their, their weapons. I knew, I knew nothing about having a gun. So for people like me who, who fall into having a gun in their house overnight, it's a great option to have people have safe houses. You don't want to have necessarily a safe locker or, or storage.
Did I answer your question, sir? I hope I did.
You're mute, Jeff, but I think you said, answered correctly.
Okay.
Are there other questions from the council before I move to the public? Okay, Sharon, I think there are some hands raised, correct? In the public?
I, Dave Cardinal. To follow up on that, for people who inherit guns and want to keep them for, I don't know, family value, is there a way you can disable them and they can keep them as opposed to just saying, oh, I have to give them up? I, I think that might be maybe something you thought about. Thank you.
That's a good point. Yeah, a lot of people prefer to use the gun. It's a cable, actually, and, and I had to use one myself, and I got some help to do it. But you know, you put it through so that you can't activate the gun. So if somebody did come across it. So, so yeah, that's certainly an option. Or there's some local gun stores that do sell safes. So that's, that's certainly an option as well.
There are other locations in the, in the area where you can actually house your guns, or you can take them to these facilities and actually pay them to have them stored outside your home. They keep them locked up. And if you do want them, you can go back and get them. So it's kind of like a safe deposit box for guns. So there are many options. People don't have to have any ammunition. They can make sure they have no ammunition in their homes. So people can have guns very, very safely. Wouldn't, you know, we're not opposed to guns. We're opposed to guns that are not securely stored or unwanted. That's what we're opposed to.
Right. Okay. Let's see. Oh, okay, there's not a hand up there anymore. Okay, one, how about one? Oh, there they are. Yes. Hello? Do you have a question?
I don't think their hand is up.
Okay, let's do 1-650-816506787562. Hello?
Good evening. My name is Caroline Vertonghen. I have a question for the present presenters.
Okay.
Yep.
So have you ever made a study to understand why people are now reaching for guns? To understand why people are now reaching for guns? And second, not that I'm a proponent, but you have to understand. When we have law enforcement not. Helping us in conserving public safety, we are forced. And as you have seen, we became a neighborhood watch group or watch community because law enforcement did nothing. So I have worked with teenagers and they're so desperate because there's so many mental health programs that are advertised and they're not helping. So I understand their frustration. And so depressed. Because there's no help. And so we have seen an increase in mental health services. But if you don't. Attack the problem that is causing those mental health problems, you're not going to get anywhere. Again, I'm not a proponent for gun violence. But law enforcement needs to step up. And when they say that they will investigate abusive frauds, illegal and criminal. They have to scrub the plate. And honor the code that they took. And unfortunately, we have seen many law enforcement officers who haven't. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. That's working, Taylor.
Thank you, Danielle and and Brad. Thank you so much for stepping into such a colossal problem where so much help is needed and for. It's daunting and I just applaud your efforts. Thank you so much. When you were also calling out the opportunity to give. Will perhaps one of our council members post on chat? Your information so that any of us out here who'd like to contribute can. And you listed two thousand to three thousand dollars. If that were a bit steep for some, I was guessing you'd take less. But if that's not the case, let let us know. And then my and then my question is. That your source of funding in general, is it matched? Is there government matching funds? Are you supported by nonprofit foundations? What what is the mix of of your source of funds? And thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks for your question. A good question. Most of the hundred and forty that we raised last time and the momentum is going very similarly. It was raised through cities and towns directly. But there are individual contributors such as for Portola Valley that they. They put a call out to residents and they matched it and that was eighteen. One thousand eight hundred and seventy five last time. So it was matched by Portola Valley, which was very generous. So we recently had a donation from a congregation in San Mateo. So we we're open to any source of donations. We just happen to have found an amazing. Community and and success in going to cities and towns. But we also don't want to. Rely on cities and towns forever. So we have talked with the county and they're going to maybe look at another funding stream coming up. Past the next two buybacks. So we actually partner with Gun by Gun and it's an organization that is a nonprofit. And so our money is held there and safe there by an MOU between our group and Gun by Gun, an organization. That will keep our funds and has nonprofit status. And then we get we get the funds out at the time of the buyback. I'm I'm able to do that. So. I don't know if that answered all the questions, but.
Yeah, I think it did. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming.
Point of clarification, the three thousand to five thousand you referred to, wasn't that an ask of the town of Portola Valley?
We'd love consideration for that if if that if that's something that you'd consider. I know that this is just a presentation, so I I thought I'd throw that in there.
But that wasn't for each resident of Portola.
No, 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 we we haven't. Yeah, no.
We we know that we know the times are tough right now for cities with COVID and everything. So we're. Any, you know, we're we're we could accept anything that people can give us, you know, we we understand the realities of what's going on in the world right now. So, you know. We're we're happy with anything.
Christie Corley?
Yeah, Danielle and Brad, I just think this is a great program and I did inherit guns in the East Bay. From my parents and we did do the sellback and it was a relief to get them out of the house, to be honest. And. I'm wondering if Portola Valley also offers the postcards that you're talking about. Have we ever sent out postcards to the city regarding that? That would be my one question. I just think this is a great program.
Okay. Dave, is that your is that an old hand up?
Can I get an answer?
Yeah, sure. We Portola Valley has not sent out postcards, Danielle. Correct me if correct me if I'm wrong. Now, I don't think they I don't think they have.
You might have promoted it a different way or in a newsletter, but the postcards themselves seem to be quite effective because other cities and. Towns have sent out like in their news bulletin, but it hasn't shown itself by zip code to be as successful as San Carlos.
Postcards is something we're going to discuss. This is.
Great.
Thank you.
And Dave, can I ask Dave Cardinal, your hand's up? Is that an old hand?
Muted. Yeah, just one clarification. I think what you're doing is great, but my point about the inherited guns is. Is there a way to neuter them? So people can put them over their mantelpiece or so my grandfather used this or whatever, but that they can't. Be shot again rather than putting them in a gun safe or with a, you know, tie through them. And just feel like, okay, this is a thing I want to preserve, but it's not going to be a weapon anymore.
I'm not an expert on firearms, but I guarantee you that can be done. I'm I'm totally confident that could be done. I don't. I wish I had more of an answer for you, but. Yeah, I I'm sure that could be done.
Right, thanks.
All right, I'm going to bring it back to the council for comments, direction to staff to put this on an agenda. Jeff?
Yes, please put it on an agenda and I think this postcard option would be great. I'd love to just see that considered as part of the agenda item. Thank you.
Okay. Craig?
I'm guess same as Jeff. I think we should probably agendaize it and. Discuss with new.
John?
Yes, I agree.
Sarah?
Yes.
All right, we love it. We applaud you for all your good work. We will discuss making another donation and this time offering a postcard. So thank you for visiting us.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you. Great work.
Thank you, boy.
Bye bye.
Bye. Moving on to the consent agenda, these items may be addressed by any member of the public. You may speak once for up to three minutes on each of the items. However, only the council can take action on the consent agenda. Would any members of the public wish to speak to an item on the consent agenda? Jeremy?
Thank you. There's just a few things I want to mention. First, we are having a few technical issues with the timer tonight. So bear with us as we try to figure out what that is. It's been freezing at Sharon's end. I wanted to mention that on item. Six, there was. Some issue related to that the. Production of the of the proclamation has a couple words that are combined. And it had something to do with the way it just got translated at the very end here. So. Should the council wish to approve it as part of the consent, we'll make sure to go back through there and if there's that there were two or three that I caught as part of that cut and paste stepper. So just want to let you know.
Okay, was there anything else we were supposed to talk about at consent? Wasn't there something else? Or is that it?
I can't think of anything.
There was a question about the details of the changes to.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Craig. I appreciate it. The. Item four. This is something that I produced last week. The file that I used was incorrectly named, so I actually used the year before data to produce the initial set. Staff caught it and we found the right data set. So all of the numbers. Have changed from that first set, so I didn't want to make the whole thing red. And I think I mentioned that in the. Revision staff report on red page thirty one. Thank you for reminding me.
So that is why we have a revised agenda. Okay, I guess there is one hand up from the public, Christie Corley.
Thank you. Answered it. Thank you.
Okay. So do I have a does anyone wish to pull something from the consent agenda? Does then, are you going to say something, Jeff?
I was going to, assuming nobody pulled anything, I was going to move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Sharon, roll call, please. Or Jeremy roll call?
I got it, Sharon. Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke.
Hi.
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Thanks. Moving on to the regular agenda, public hearing number seven. Adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty one annual budget September revision. Cindy, are you going to handle this one?
Think I'm going to start. I we don't have much of a presentation this evening. You've seen this budget four times now, so I'm sure you know it intimately forwards and backwards. As per the. Staff report on red page sixty five, there were no changes made additionally to the budget based on council direction. At the at the last meeting. So this is really coming forward as is. Happy to entertain any questions or comments you have. And again, I want to thank Cindy and Jim and the rest of the team for putting together just an exceptional document. Thank you.
Are there questions for Cindy or Jim or Jeremy? Okay, then I think Cara, I need to open the public hearing, correct? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Does anyone in the public wish to ask a question and make a comment about? Our September revision budget?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for comments or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, John, did you make a motion to approve?
I did.
I'll second.
And Craig seconded. Roll call, please, someone.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke. Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi, and I echo Jeremy's words. Thank you so much, Cindy and Jim. Fantastic job.
Thank you.
Yeah, same same for me. Yeah, sorry.
Item number eight is a study session on our inclusionary housing fund use. This has been a long time coming.
Certainly has. Mayor Derwin, members of the council. We're delighted to kick off what we anticipate. Oh, Sarah, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say I am recusing myself from the study session based on the fact that I have a family member. Who may be connected to a future development project in town. So I'm just going to go, I'll listen in and we'll turn my video off.
Okay, got it. Thanks, Sarah.
Well, we're delighted to have this conversation with you tonight. As the mayor said, it's been a long time coming. We don't anticipate that issues will be resolved this evening, looking for direction on what would ultimately be the preparation of. A policy on the use of these funds. The town is, as the staff report says, the town has collected these funds for some period of time. They're called officially in lieu fee. Yeah, that would be in lieu of providing actual units in a development project. While the in lieu fee program exists, there isn't a policy that dictates how the monies could possibly be used. And there's a variety of ways that 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 could happen. And the staff report. Goes into some discussion, particularly on a red page sixty eight on on how funds can be used. There are a variety of different ways to do this and staff did not want to make any recommendations tonight in order to not color any. Any information or guidance from from the council. This staff report was developed by the town attorney and and me. We thought that it would be helpful. A car suggestion item four is the attachment is Sonoma County's housing fund guidelines. We believe this is a pretty easy to read document. It has, we're not recommending that you. Necessarily. Have fees allocated in the way they do within the policy, but it's a good way of looking at this with a with a. As as an opportunity to develop a future future policy. We are anticipating as we move into the next housing element cycle. Potential for new development projects in town that could include an inclusionary housing component. And this conversation, I think, is very timely. There are projects that are in the pipeline that would expect to be discussed in a more formal setting in the near future that. Maybe interested in the use of these funds. So again, I think it's a very timely conversation. As of the end of the last fiscal years, you can see we collected in the in lieu amount approximately three point seven million dollars. And it is available for the types of uses that are both in the staff report and in the Sonoma County guidelines. I I wanted to point out, I think the staff report does a decent job describing this, but the housing element doesn't have a program within it to reconsider. The use of such a fund. And at least to our knowledge, this is a reflection of. The experiences with the Blue Oak subdivision and ultimately. Ability of the town to develop some below market rate units as per that development. It's a so the housing element program actually looks to change the program and eliminate that that feature. So that's something that we will take out of this as part of a. Working on any housing element pieces in this cycle. I'm going to stop there. Want to turn it over to Cara if you have any additional thoughts and Laura Russell, the planning and building director is here as well, because this will obviously affect. Projects that come into her shop. She's available to answer any questions as well. We're hoping for a dynamic and. Back and forth conversation and happy to answer any questions. Cara, do you have anything you want to add?
Sure. Thank you, Cara Silvertown Attorney. I think that the issue that I wanted to stress is that there are really two components to the discussion of affordable housing. The first component is the inclusionary housing program itself. And that is the policy level document that is contained in the housing element. And that program talks about the percentage of lots that should be set aside for affordable housing. It talks about the collection of in lieu fees. And then our current housing program also talks about a density bonus for additional market rate units. For those projects that do provide onsite affordable housing. So that's what our current program is is. And the Housing Element Committee will likely review that entire program. And there have already been some discussions about it. And as part of the Housing Element update. In the past, we've really just focused on the. The allocation of the two hundred and fifty three units, but also a very important task associated with updating your housing element. Consists of updating all of the policies and the most important policy, of course, is the inclusionary housing policy, how to. Better ensure that the number of affordable units that are prescribed to us are in fact built. And there are a number of incentive programs that a housing element. It codifies essentially. So for now, though, we're not talking about the. So for now, though, we're not talking about the policy aspect of the inclusionary housing element. We're talking about, as Jeremy mentioned, the second piece of the inclusionary housing program. And that is, once we have collected these in lieu fees, and there will likely be, regardless of, of future program refinements, there will likely be some component of an inclusionary housing program that involves the collection of fees. And so this step is, once we collect those fees, how will they be allocated? Which project should be given priority? Should there be a formal solicitation process in the housing field and arena? This is called a notice of funding availability or a NOFA. It's common for towns to say, we have a certain amount of money and then provide a RFP essentially to affordable housing providers and ask them to propose ways to use that money in the town. And so we, at this point, just don't really have any structure for prioritizing various projects. And so that's what we expect to be discussed in these housing guidelines. So with that, I think what we are looking for is some, some feedback on, you know, the timing of, of putting together these guidelines. Do you think that this is a priority for staff to work on these guidelines? What type of community input do you want? Do you want to be involved in the formulation of the guidelines? Or do you want to have a, you know, a staff presented set of guidelines prepared? All of those issues we encourage discussion on. Thank you.
Thanks, Cara. Questions? Craig?
Yeah, I have a question as to what timing may be required by our currently active housing element. As I recall, our housing element that's currently active says that we will explore the use of the funds or something fairly vague like that, but it doesn't say we will actually spend the funds in this cycle necessarily. And so, you know, given that we are quite far into this cycle and we have more or less hit our arena numbers in most of the categories at this point already. But we're facing a vastly higher goal for the next cycle. Do we want to hold some of that money back? And is that compatible with what we have in our current housing element?
I'll start and staff, but feel free to jump in. You're correct, Craig, that there is no obligation to spend the money in this cycle. You know, the way that, this might be a little repetitive, the way that I understand the program, and I'm referring specifically to page seventy-four, red page seventy-four, which is a slice of the housing element. This is a component section here. That the work that has been designated as part of the housing element is to revise the program. No direction on expenditure of funds whatsoever. So that is something that, as, as Cara said, is going to likely come out of the housing element process related to the programming element, if there's going to be some revisions here. That answer your question?
It does, yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, more questions? Jeff?
Yeah, is there any, you know, is there any research out there that talks about, you know, best practices in terms of funds like this, or what has the most impact in terms of getting housing built locally?
I'm not familiar with work of that nature. I will look for it. I'll even look for it right now as we're having the discussion. I can say, and please my colleagues join in, you know, every city does approach this pretty differently. Part of that has to do with how much housing they're actually building, the types of housing that they're doing, and, you know, what is essentially a priority for them. So we, there is diversity in the way that you can decide how monies are allocated. Let me see if I can find something that's we're talking right now.
I'm just curious, and I mean, I was looking for myself a little bit. My other question. Back, I mean, the the largest chunk of money in the fund right now came from the Blue Oaks property sale. And there was a point where we sort of talked about that money going to eight more moderate income, eight novel moderate income for sale units to replace the eight units that never got built to Blue Oaks. But I assume that's, that was never a legal requirement, right? That was just, just sort of an idea that we sort of tried to apply to the same program that didn't happen at Blue Oaks. Is that, is that correct? Or is there any other, sort of legal encumbrance we have in terms of, like, any legal limitation to what we can do with the money besides the task to go for affordable housing?
I know, no other legal issues, Cara.
That's my understanding. I recall looking at that issue a number of years ago, and, and that was my understanding, but we should probably revisit that issue and confirm.
Thank you.
Did I see, John?
Yeah, you mentioned, Jeremy, that there's a fair, fairly wide range of options open in the, in the region. Is there any kind of consensus amongst some of our neighbors about how they're dealing with these issues?
Well, one area I think that there's a burgeoning consensus is that I think fewer people do the inclusionary in lieu fee. They look at housing impact fees. It's a little different kind of take on, on all of this. Like, I think one of the challenges that cities have is, you know, what we're struggling with tonight, what do you do with it when you get the money? It's much easier to actually direct somebody who's developing a project to include some additional units. I, in my experience, I have seen everything from NOFAs to first come, first served, to we'll give it to one project, to every project that comes, gets ten percent, will hold money back. I mean, I've seen everything. I, other than to say what I said earlier about the phasing out of in lieu fees, I don't know, I don't know personally with consensus. My colleagues who are a little closer to housing issues may, may have a better answer than that.
I agree with what Jeremy just said. There's a very wide range, and it has a lot to do with what are the demographics of the community that they're trying to serve? And what are their other priorities? And then how does it fit into their other priorities? So there's a very wide range.
Are there any other questions?
I, I will also say that most of the time the local funding is only a small piece of the project. And so what many cities do is try to, you know, leverage those local funds as much as possible. And so, and the, the big affordable housing resource is the tax credit program, which I believe is sort of being phased out. But currently, it, it is the tax credit program, and that you get extra points in that program if you have a local participation a piece of it. And so it's, it's very common for agencies to participate in that regard.
Right, other questions? Craig?
Well, now I have a follow-up question about the tax credit that you mentioned. Is that federal or state?
I believe it's a federal program that is administered by the state.
Gotcha, one of those. And, and you said that you get credit for local participation. Do you get more credit the more there is local participation? Or if we throw in a dollar to every project, does that?
No, you get more, so with tax credit transactions, they are graded, and you get a series of points, and there are, you know, various metrics. And I believe that the more local participation that is received, obviously on a pro-rata basis, percentage basis, the project receives more points.
Okay, but there, there may be some kind of formula that if we, if we wanted to, as you say, leverage the money, we would want to understand that formula so that we could give enough money to get to whatever the next level of tax credit is.
Right. Yes.
But if, you know, if an extra hundred dollars doesn't make a difference, then let's save the hundred dollars for the next project.
Right.
And the tax credit program is on a specific timeline, and it's a long timeline. So cities that give money for tax credit projects often sometimes will structure their schedule and their availability of funds to line up with that schedule.
It makes sense, yeah.
Okay, are we done with questions? And should I go to the public? Okay, there is one, there are two hands up here. David Cardinal.
Hi. You know, the Blue Oaks is almost two decades old now, and the Al's nursery project was before that. You know, we could be accused of being pretty nimby because we've not done anything for twenty years, is what I, from what I can tell. With the millions of dollars we've had to allocate to below market rate housing. And I don't know what it should be, but I would say that we haven't done anything. And so it's not the town council's fault or anything like that. But as a town, if we think this is an important question, we're stuck on in neutral is my perception of it.
Thanks, Dave. Mita?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with David Cardinal, and I know that there's an example from Sonoma. But perhaps we can look, you know, like, once we see that this money is clear to use and not just focused earmarked for something concerning Blue Oaks project, look at what Hillsborough, Woodside, and Los Altos Hills are doing. Those are our close neighbors that are demographically a lot like us and top of, you know, they, they, the lands look a lot like ours. So hopefully we'll learn more by looking a little closer and seeing what they're doing with our friends. Thank you.
Question for Laura or Jeremy, do, does Hillsborough and Woodside even have an inclusionary housing fund?
I, Los Altos Hills has a housing impact fee, which is a little different. It's like a linkage fee. It's for the same purposes, but it, it can result in different outcomes. It's, it's actually, I mean, the way that I think about it is that it's, it, it's a statement that those, those units aren't going to be produced on site, if you will, that they can be produced somewhere else. So I think it's a statement about where those units might go. I'm not aware of an affordable housing project in Los Altos Hills. In Hillsborough, I believe they have some. Actually, I don't know that they have anything. I can, I'll take a look here real quick. I'm, again, I'm not aware of any affordable housing projects that have been funded by anything of that ilk.
They do ADUs.
Yeah.
And Woodside? Same, correct?
Yes, there's no affordable housing projects there. I'll, I'll, I'll take a quick look as we're talking.
Okay. Oh, wait, there are more hands up. Jim White.
Hi, this is Jim White. I'm a local resident and someone that is moving forward on probably putting a, a project in front of you that would be making a request here. And just as someone who's been spending some time looking at the challenges of building low-income housing, I think there's a reason you don't see any of these projects coming forward to Portola Valley is the two things that, that stand in the way. One is land cost. And the second is some of the zoning constraints on density, because at the end of the day, these are a cost per unit that, how you have to look at it. And so the two things that matter there are generally low land costs or zero land costs and very low cost per unit, which generally means some scale. And so in any case, I, I don't think that the large low-income housing folks like Mid Penn, in fact, we have board members in Portola Valley that have served for a long time on that. And I've talked to them. I think you can find out why they're not doing projects here. So I think there's a reason that the fund has sat for ten years and will probably sit if you're going to wait for people to come forward. I would just encourage you to support any projects that do come forward because it's fighting against a lot of things that make it very difficult to do that here. Thank you.
Mayor Derwin, the, as I, as I understood, Hillsborough and Woodside do not have any, any form of housing or inclusionary fees whatsoever. And maybe if I could just make a comment on, on Jim's comments, I, I think he's absolutely right. It's, it's very challenging to bring forward a project that could utilize funds when zoning is, our zoning is designed to limit any kind of multifamily housing to specific pockets of town under the affiliated housing program. It's not intended to, and those units are under the current affiliate housing program are for employees of those institutions. I think it's also worth noting that even if the town had a very modest multifamily housing zoning, it simply may not pencil out for, for most folks, as Jim was, was intimating to, to even come forward with something unless it was heavily subsidized by, by funds from other sources, whether it's town, housing endowment, or regional trust, other, other entities. Thank you.
Kristy Corley?
Yes, thank you for taking my question. I would just encourage you to keep the public involved. You said there's a few applications or things you're considering. And the earlier the public knows, the more they can get their head around this. And I encourage you to not do everything ministerially or without public knowledge, but to be inclusive from the very beginning of any application. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, anybody else from the public?
No other hands are raised.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Can Cara and Jeremy, can you help? Help us get started here? What, how would you, there's so much to discuss.
There's a lot here, and we know we've given a lot to you. You know, first, I'd like to emphasize that there's no, there's no need to make a decision this evening as it relates to a course. I think based on, read his comments and others, I think it'd be very fair for the council to ask us to do some additional research if you'd like. It will be difficult to find a city of our size and socioeconomic stature that'll have a program that, that can be transferable. It's, it's just not something that really exists in the same way. That's why we haven't done it. I, I think that I mean, to the extent that the council's comfortable with the conversation this evening like this, I, I think it would be helpful for staff to hear more about issues such as, you know, should, should we be looking at using the funds that we have now for one project or two projects? Should we be considering holding money for some future project? The town is a member of its own affiliated housing program, and this would be the source to fund those things. You know, for the, for the site that has been identified from the housing Town on Property Committee. So I think that that would be helpful to start to hear that conversation again without any, it doesn't need to be a relative conclusion related to that. I'll stop there, Cara. Laura?
Cara, do you have anything to add?
Um, yeah, I think all of those are, are good questions to ask. Things like, you know, what types of, of projects would you like to incentivize with, with the funds? You know, I think that this town has focused on ADUs. Do you want to encourage, you know, the affordable affordable deed restricted ADUs by subsidizing those? ADU construction in exchange for a deed restriction? Or do you want to encourage other types of, of housing projects, more rental housing projects? Supportive housing, shared housing, there are lots of different types of models. And, and if you have a priority, you know, that would be, that would be good to hear at this point. And it may be that, that you want to encourage everything and, and anything that, that is financially feasible to, to be constructed in town because it is challenging. Because it, it is challenging.
Okay. Who would like to begin? Oh, yes, Craig, I was gonna, I can always count on you for being the first to want to talk.
Sure. Um, so, um, I, I have a, a couple thoughts. Um, my first one is that, um, the, the housing cycle here is kind of working against actually. Putting this money into, you know, deploying this money before 2023, in my opinion. We know that we more or less hit our targets for this cycle. HCD has accepted our current housing element. We're well into it. Everything is fine for this element. But we also know that the upcoming element is going to be very challenging. Um, and, um, having $3.7 million to spend to assist us. Uh, in putting that element together in a way that can convincingly produce 253 units from 2023 to 2031. Um, that's, that's a big powerful tool. Um, I know, you know, as the housing element subcommittee is going to be, your committee is going to be doing its work to. Um, come up with a new housing element and then planning commission, then ultimately us. We're going to run into a lot of problems, um, some of which can be solved with money. Um, and especially when you're talking about the lower income level, uh, below market rate units. Um, being able to do things like pay for building inspectors. We're going to, if, if we build 253 units, that's about two and a half times the rate of housing production that we've been doing for the last eight years and plus in Portola Valley. We're going to need two and a half times as many building inspectors. Um, we're going to need two and a half times as many plan checkers. We're going to need two and a half times as many sewer connections. We're going to need to, all of these. Things that are involved in building houses are scaling up in, uh, 2023. Um, and being able to assist with the fees for those things for, um, below market rate housing, I think would be a, a good use of the funds. Um, and that, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what the timeline is on, on the project that Jim is contemplating. Um, but, you know, the more we can use these funds after 2023, um, or, or at least. Um, you know, have them on the books still when we submit our housing element to HCD for review and talk about how we'll be using them in, in the next coming cycle. Um, I think the more that will help us to get an approved housing element that targets the 253 units we've been allocated. Um, the other thing that I'd suggest is that. My inclination, all other things being equal, would be to target the funds towards things that benefit. The town as a whole, not just the individual project developer or the private interest in whatever individual project. So things like sewer connection fees, upgrading traffic circumstances or what, whatever other infrastructure stuff that is a cost for any private project. Um, but if we were to target our funding towards reducing those costs as opposed to. Buying the land or something else that doesn't directly benefit, um, the, the other citizens or residents of town. I would, my inclination would be to, to look at those kinds of costs. Um, and that would include things like town staff or whatever that may otherwise be borne by, um, by the rest of the town or comes from the general fund. So, um. Those are, those are my high level thoughts, um, in terms of which types of projects I would tend, stuff like that, I'd tend to be as, as broad as possible. Um, I think, um, the more we can support multiple projects, um, the, the more likely our. Use of the money will be helpful towards getting the magic 253 number that we're going to need to get in our housing element. But other than that, I think, you know, the more flexibility, um, the more likely we'll actually spend some of this money or hopefully all of this money.
John.
Jeff had his hand up first, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. It doesn't matter. Go ahead, John.
Um, interesting ideas, Craig. I, I like, I'm sorry.
Jeff's hand is so pale.
Yeah, it is.
Man, there's always this wall behind it, yeah.
You have to make it darker.
No, I was gonna say, I, I, I appreciate your thoughts, Craig, and, and how we might, uh, extend the use of those, those funds. I, I think, of course, it, it depends on. Projects, um, and the number, uh, if, if the rules don't change and projects that don't get built are still. Uh, still add to our, to our numbers, then it, it doesn't really, the infrastructure idea doesn't really help. I, I do agree though, that we need to, to basically throw it wide open and, and. Have as many ways as possible to address use of these funds. Um, I would hope that it would go to actual projects and if that does come about. And we can actually also leverage the funds that would, of course, make it go a little further, perhaps. In terms, maybe in, in the form of grants or loans. Not sure how that would be worked out, but it's, uh. To my mind, the, uh, most logical way to get actual projects built and rather than, uh, numbers on a list. I'd be interested to know if, if, uh, that kind of approach for loans and, and, uh, grants has been used in any of her, any other cities locally. Or it didn't sound like that kind of thing has happened, but, uh, be interesting to find out. Uh, let's see, what would be, I'm sorry, I'm losing track of what the other, what the other issues we want to address are. I think we should, we should. We should pursue as many options as possible, basically, and, um. I'm open to both grants and fund and, uh, loans and to potentially putting some aside for future town projects. Although the recent efforts by our town committee to find lots that we own that might be usable kind of ran up into a dead end. So, um. There's still a little bit of few possibilities there that might, might work, so we probably ought to consider that as a, as one avenue. That's all for now.
Jeff.
Um, you know, earlier I just, I was asking about things that have an impact and I, one of the issues that I, I've run across a lot, mostly through PCE is just free ridership. Where you, you subsidize something that would have happened anyway. And that's something I think we absolutely should be doing our best to avoid. Um, you know, the, the, the question with, you know, the sewer infrastructure. If we thought that we were enabling West Bay to do something that their sewer finance, you know, that the regime they have wasn't going to accomplish. I mean, West Bay does a decent job, I think, of fin- funding this stuff when they've actually decided they're going to connect a sewer. It's not, it's not a great system. People don't love it, but they actually have a way of paying for everything when they do expand sewers. So I feel like, to me, that's a lower priority. And then in terms of, you know, like, you know, building inspectors, uh, subsidizing like building inspections is a pass through typically. I would definitely want to prioritize that if we're going to do it to go to nonprofits as opposed to sort of for-profit developers out there. Um, you know, a lot of our ADUs are built basically by for-profit developers. Feels like a lower priority to me. I mean, like, you know, like, like these projects, you know, like, again, a project built, being built by a nonprofit feels like something that feels like we should be directing ourselves towards. Those projects. I mean, when we, when we looked back at, you know, years ago, we looked at 900. We were talking a little bit with, with, um, Palo Alto Housing Corp. And just talking about different things we could do to make that, that project pencil out. Um, and that was, you know, that was a nonprofit developer. We, we would have been giving them the land. What else could we have done to make that project happen? I just, you know, I, I really want to focus on things that are actually going to tip the scale and get something built as opposed to things that are going to fund a project that somebody's going to build anyway. The one other thought I had is that, um, you know, that, the. In terms of everything that Steph is doing right now, this, you know, I, I feel like Steph has her hands full just getting this housing element together. I feel like this funding, I mean, it's been sitting there for a long time and I don't, you know, unless we really have a compelling vision for what to do with it. I think, I feel like I could wait till after the housing element is done and we could sort of, it could be something that could be pursued. As, you know, as we start looking at projects in the future. So I feel like I could maybe wait till after the housing element itself was completed. Unless you feel like, like the funding mechanism, this feels like a very small, it feels like, it feels like it might streamline a few projects here and there as opposed to really making a lot of big things happen. I mean, $3.7 million might build us two units of housing on our property. It feels like a small impact versus something that might be able to streamline, you know, 50 projects or, or, you know, 50 units out there if applied carefully. That's, that's my first round of thoughts and I'm happy to hear, uh, other, uh, any responses to them.
And, gee, Jeremy, were you going to speak to that?
I was gonna offer, uh, uh, another element, um, as you guys are considering this. The, you know, the, the housing element committee is going to make some determinations on how to fulfill. Uh, really two things here. One, the, the council's vision as it relates to housing through the housing strategic plan and the work that you've done into the arena numbers. And, you know, the potential for what the, uh, what that looks like vis a vis zoning will be determined through the housing element. Um, but just for the sake of a conversation, if multifamily projects become something more common in town. Um, there, there could be some projects that are, that are built primarily for market rate and have a, a very small. Uh, affordable housing component, component, there actually could be projects that are going to be, um, proposed that are completely, um. Affordable, uh, to, to serve a particular population and the like. So that might be another way to think about this as well. What types of projects are you encouraging to be built here? Uh, and that reflects back on what the program, uh, in the housing element is suggesting on a change. You can do both of these things, right? You can still have an inclusionary housing fee or you can convert that to a housing impact fee that's different. But you could also, um, you could end the, the inclusionary in lieu fee program, have that money distributed in a particular way. But require, say, for any project that has more than four units, six units, it must have one unit of affordable housing. So you can accomplish different things with different tools. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that that was, um, a potential, uh, clears a potential path for the council to consider as you move forward. I, I would, I would anticipate as, as things change that there will be a whole variety of potential projects that, that could be. Uh, that could come forward, that could have all that different mix involved, um, you know, for, uh, as, as described. Thanks.
Yes, Craig.
So to, to respond to some of the, the things Jeff said. Um, I, I, I think, you know, we, we've seen in this current cycle that there are, um, amongst the different. Uh, gradation levels of below market rate housing. There, there are some categories that are quite good at building because everybody builds themselves a fancy pool house called an ADU. Um, and there are somewhere we have more trouble. Um, and that I expect is going to project forward, continue, you know, continue to, to happen in 2023 through 31. And so if we can look at the areas where we, we, based on our past history, we expect we will continue to have. Trouble producing the housing that we need to produce. You know, trying to focus on those things. So I'm not saying, oh, yes, we'll, you know, give, give you money if you're building a fancy pool house. Um, but let's say a hypothetical situation, if somebody were to buy my property and decide to build, uh, fourplex or a threeplex or something. That would exceed the capacity of my septic system. They would have to connect to the sewer. That sewer connection, including the design, the engineering, et cetera, the fee that they'd have to pay to buy in, that would cost three or $400,000. Um, and when you're talking about the price per unit, the impact to that is going to be significant. Um, and that could be the difference between a project being buildable, um, for a developer, uh, versus not being buildable. Um, so I, I, I agree, Jeff. I don't think we want to subsidize things that are going to happen anyway. Um, but I, I think you can make, um, marginal differences that can be the difference between a project happening versus not happening. And, and, and doing that in a way where you're targeting it at the problems that. Know our housing element is going to have, or some types of things as we develop our housing element for the, the coming cycle. Some things are going to face more significant problems than others, having a pot of money to put behind that to say. Okay, we think, you know, we're, I don't, I don't know the actual breakdown, but we. Arena wants us to build 35 medium income housing units. The plans that we have, our calculations, Laura does her magic math and thinks it's only 23, so we need an extra 12 from somewhere. Let's figure out how we can use $3.7 million to get those extra 12 units. Um, so that's, that's the kind of flexibility where it's not necessarily deciding now what we're going to do. But it's not waiting until after the housing element to say, okay, well, we'll start thinking about spending it. It's really combining those two and giving this to our housing element committee as a tool that they can use. As they're putting the housing element together to say, oh, we're, we're pretty close here, but if we just had another half million dollars. We could nudge it up a little bit more and another million dollars on this category could help that one out. And, you know, I, I think 3.7 is not a lot of money, as you say, when you're talking about buying a piece of land or, um. Giving it to a project to just develop. Um, you, you might get a small number of units. But, um, if we're having our feet, you know, held to the fire more strongly by the state to. Plan for these units in a realistic way. Um, being able to have the housing element target the funds to hit those numbers, I think, could be a, a powerful tool.
Jeremy, are you raising a new hand?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm gonna probably do that a lot tonight. Um, the, just a few comments, um, and Laura and Cara and I are having a side. Conversation as the council's developing some ideas. We will take a look at, um, i- if I'm hearing it correctly, Craig, at, at the concept of, um, you know, direct. Uh, support for what I, what I would describe as infrastructure elements of, of a project. Um, our initial take is we, we don't know that that, the monies can be used in that way. Now, certainly for fee waivers and the like, that, that's absolutely available, but that's probably a drop in the bucket when it comes to these projects. So we can bring that back, back as a product.
If we can buy land and give it to a developer, why can't we buy them a sewer connection?
That's what we're going to look into, whether or not that that's. Um, I just don't want to say.
Or a wider driveway or help them clear the brush to create better sightlines for traffic or whatever, you know.
Right.
That kind of thing.
Right. And, and that kind of support may not be as direct as it sounds, but it may happen in other cities and they just come up with a, a, a way to package it. Um, the other thing that I would mention is that, um, I mean, to, this is, I'm just offering this as a, as a way to, to, to consider this. The housing element committee is going to be pretty busy as it relates to the broadest set of strategic issues here. And, um, we, we didn't make the recommendation in tonight's staff report to send this back to the housing element committee. Because in some ways, this is a programmatic element of the, of that work. So we thought it made more sense for it to continue to be developed here, um, uh, at the council with the direction of staff, bring that back at some point. Um, so for what that's worth, wanted to share that as well.
Okay, thanks. Does anyone else wish to speak or may I speak?
Laura has her hand up.
Yeah, Laura. Yeah, through the mayor, I just wanted to add, um, kind of to follow up on, on Councilmember Hughes' comments. There are cities that have ways to sort of adjust the priorities as they're going through a housing element cycle. And so you might monitor, for example, the number of units that are getting constructed in the different categories. And you may have set times to shift priorities to help you to achieve the overall goal at the end of eight years. So that would be possible. Uh, we also want to continue to think about additional funds presumably will continue to come into this, um, fund. If we keep the inclusionary lot requirement, so if there are subdivisions in the future, money will continue to come into it. It may also be appropriate to have, um, an affordable housing fee like Jeremy was talking about. So some places will have a fee for very small projects, um, like one to six units, just pay a fee. And then over six units, you have to start developing the unit. Or sometimes you can pay the in lieu fee up to 10 units in a project or something like that. So if we end up with these small multifamily projects as part of our housing element update, there could be a new revenue stream that comes from that. If they are market rate, so it wouldn't necessarily be a lot of money, but it might be more of a consistent revenue stream. Then that the council could set priorities so that it could shift as the, as the kind of needs are changing through the course of the housing element cycle.
Great, that's really helpful. Thanks. Um, I just wanted to read the policy priorities from the Sonoma Housing Fund document. The purpose of the CFH is to develop. Fund document. The purpose of the CFH is to develop, preserve and accelerate the pace of development. Of below market rate housing for low, very low and extremely low income households. And then they go on to say that they will provide grants to developers, public entities, groups, individuals. The hardest units to build are the very low income units because they need the most subsidies. If we really want to make a difference, I think we should target the very low income units. We have. Seventy-three very low and forty-two low in our next housing cycle. So that for me would be a priority. Like John, I would prefer. Grants. I don't know about loans. I don't know enough about that. I guess. I'm sort of inclined to think of grants. And the reason I think we should get this going is because I know of two. Two applicants who are going to want to get started next year, if not this year, who would probably be applying for grants. And you can also use it to layer on extra requirements. Although Cara, am I right? Usually is it a fifty-five year timeline that it has to stay affordable? Or is it not always fifty-five?
Yeah, typically. When you either grant or loan funds. The the town will always include at least a fifty-five year affordability covenant as a condition of lending those funds.
Okay, so I was gonna say.
You can, you can create a longer term, but fifty-five now is sort of the standard in the industry.
That's what I thought. Well, so things like that, you could add things like that. So that that's sort of where I'm headed here. Jeff?
Oh, and and just to that last point, this came up at the Housing Element Committee meeting on Monday. At the end of the fifty-five years, there are mechanisms so that, you know, the 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 housing doesn't suddenly, you were there. Does that doesn't magically go from market, below market rate to market rate. So the last, the last. The person who buys it year fifty-two doesn't suddenly get a huge windfall because the property is no longer below market. Just want to clarify that in case somebody else is wondering, because it was, it was a good question that came up during Monday meeting. Sorry, were you still talking? Because I had one response to you, but I I couldn't wait. I completely agree with you about the very low and low income being a priority. My one caveat to that is that if to the extent that the very low and low income are ADUs. I wouldn't want, I would, if we were going to apply money towards an ADU, I would absolutely want it to be deed restricted in some way like this. So I definitely want, you know. I I I just, I would not want the money to go to a private property that that wasn't going to actually be rented or rented.
I should probably say, I assume that these would be going to more multifamily. I mean, four units more, maybe up to twenty units, who knows?
Yeah.
Probably.
I'm thinking about our current element where a lot of our very low and low income are ADUs, but yeah.
Craig.
I I I I don't philosophically disagree, but historically, we have produced very large numbers of those. Very low income. As as Rena calculates them units and and. Excuse me, probably not very many of them actually have people living in them. I think a lot of those are what I call fancy pool houses, not. Real, you know, ADUs and maybe, you know, guests come and stay in them once in a while, or grandma comes and lives there for a month at a time. But. We don't seem to have trouble producing those. Now, whether they're the right kind of very low income units. Is is a separate question, but. I think we should really look at. Where we specifically have problems producing units rather than where generally it's difficult to produce units. Because we we do seem to produce those very low income units already. Without extra incentives. Now, maybe with the higher numbers in the coming cycle, we may need to juice that a little bit and help it out, but. Those are actually the units that we we do currently produce.
Yes, but as you pointed out, they're not really being used to house low income people. And that's my point. I, it would be nice to actually build some units for people. Who need housing that is below market rate. Yes, John.
Yeah, I was gonna basically say the same thing and and add that I think the. Low income and very low income are important, but I think there's also a a big, as they call the missing middle, the. Moderate income housing that would be just as important to to address. I I think we need to open it wide up and I really hope that we can figure out a way to not. Just put numbers on Rena's scorecard.
Yeah.
Because that's, that is just not doing anything for anybody, really, except for the people who build them. And use them as poolhouse. So I I don't, yeah.
Is this helping you guys, Laura?
Yeah, this is incredibly helpful. This was precisely the conversation that we were hopeful to hear tonight and expecting. So I think what we can do is start to take what we've heard. Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Ann, there are questions from. Residents, if you wanted to take those.
Can do one more round of.
Yes, yeah.
Cardinal again.
Hold on, David. There you go.
Derek, first of all, I appreciate what Craig said and supported completely. Back in the day, a few million dollars might have actually bought us some houses, but unfortunately not anymore. So we need to leverage it how we can. I also think this whole notion of like low income, I mean. Are we nuts? This, these are like actually the regular, the world out there. These are people with jobs. So the the point is, how can we? Provide housing in our town for people who work for a living. And to me, that's, it's not like low income housing, like, oh, Cabrini-Greens or whatever. So. You know, we're, we're so far off the scale. That anything we can do to make it so people who actually, you know, get a paycheck on a normal basis. Can live here and be part of our community, I think would be huge. And that might be multifamily homes along the corridor. Or maybe ADUs, which doesn't seem to work that well. So I'm, I'm all for it and the 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 sort of. Dismissive of low income or below market rate. It's like, no, these are, these are the people who, you know, make our economy work. These are Americans. So, thank you.
Yeah, very low income is. Fifty percent of AMI. What is, so what what is that, Laura? What what would a salary be for very low income? You had those figures, didn't you?
I just, I just had this open. Hold on.
Did you have it open from Monday?
I mean, it's, it's like.
Yeah, give me a second, but.
Sorry, I don't have it open. I I think, I think the area median income for one person right now is a hundred and seven thousand dollars. So that's.
Yeah, yeah. So we, I, I, yeah, the very low income, I think, was under maybe like forty-two thousand. Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find, I've got the agenda from the Housing Element Meeting. I'm trying to find the actual, it it had all this spelled out. Sorry, maybe we should move on. I I'm not sure.
I I was just trying to make the point that these are working class and even middle class.
And even professional, right? Professional planners that are entry level to middle level qualify.
Yeah, exactly.
I think, I think like, as I recall, a barista at Starbucks would have fallen under like low income. And then I I think like thirty to forty thousand dollars was it was was very low income. And so it's.
People who work at nonprofits, a lot of them make that.
Yeah, yeah. Not to mention like our, you know, landscapers, construction people, so a lot of them are in that range too, so.
Okay, I'm gonna call on the phone number. Six five. Seven five six two. Is that you, Carolyn?
Yes, it's me. It's me. Thank you so much. It's very interesting and it's very. Creative. I have no doubt because I've been following your politics for at least twenty years. So I have no doubt that you will find the money somehow. However. If I can remind you that you, um, council has a general plan. And you are already so behind. On so many things that you promised and that you have not fulfilled. Public safety is one of them. I'm very happy that council members brought up our infrastructure, but also our resources. And as I mentioned to you personally, we have a huge problem with our water. Twenty-two, you have to get more data. Because that's what the latest data was. You had, according to the general plan. California Water Company gave you data and promised that there was going to be sufficient water up to twenty, twenty-two. But you have added so many ADUs, there's so many renters in our community that have not been reported. And just this week, I saw the debilitating water structure on Palmer Lane. It's a good thing that they they took it away, but it it it's another. It's another document and proof that you need to in improve your infrastructure. Before you attack any other new project and you're already behind. You know, so, sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Jim White.
Hi, I just thought I'd throw a few things out there. I I appreciate that the Rena numbers. For low income and very low income have been hit, but that's with essentially zero deed restricted. Properties. The very low income right now is for a two-person household is seventy-three thousand, one hundred dollars. That is really working area. The rent that you would have to be charging for very low income, the most you can charge is just under fifteen hundred dollars a month. So again, to make these things work. You know, a sewer connection isn't going to make those numbers work where the building costs are six hundred dollars the square foot. And the land cost is, you know, probably close to, you know, a million and a half to two million dollars per acre. If you go back to the unit cost, even if you're doing a four unit. I also think that the Rena numbers could change where deed restriction is going to be required or some significant percentage. And even though we maybe hit some of the numbers in very low income. It's through a a relatively sketchy set of assumptions in Element Twenty-One's report on data from fifteen years ago. And sub-twenty data points. So I don't believe that's going to hold up under scrutiny. And if the deed restrictions were required. You really are going to have to support these units. I I think trying to pick projects is going to be tough. I I encourage you to think about the dollar per unit. That's going to make a difference, realizing that the real cost to build a unit in this area is probably over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit. So unless you're gonna make a difference, it, you know, you're gonna need to put several hundred thousand dollars or more per unit to make. Some of these numbers work if people are gonna deed restrict them. Otherwise, the numbers cannot work. And I think there's targeted populations that are really challenged. There's still no supportive housing. In Portola Valley, you know, a, you know, meaningful percentage of families in Portola Valley have. Family members or individuals with a variety of supportive needs. I think there's also. You know, this notion of supporting people that are working in the areas. We, you know, Roberts, the Sequoias, the Priory. All have jobs that they need supported. So, you know, finding things that do that, I think is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Jeremy.
I think that's an old hand.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
I see no hands. So are we, have we given you enough direction for now?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we're in a good shape to come back with some additional considerations related to the policy. One, one question I do have, and I appreciate that council members who brought this up during the discussion, so level of priority. As it relates to bringing something back. So would love to hear some more from the council on when you'd like to see. What I would anticipate wouldn't be a a draft policy, but answering some additional questions. And bringing for some additional information that could be helpful.
When would we like to see it?
I mean, I I think I agree with the the point that we made about how this is actually probably useful to. In some way integrate with the Housing Element discussion. Which to me means that we probably should wait until we've kind of gotten a little deeper into that and and maybe. I mean, we probably shouldn't bother hearing it again until we've actually talked about some real nuts and bolts of the housing element itself and where this might be applied to that. And then come back with when when we have some ideas about that, which could be probably several months, I would think. So I can see the point of 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 making it part of this housing element, because but that's probably still leaves us a good, you know. Six or eight months before we'd be, come back to us. Laura, does that sound fair to you?
If you want to time it up with the Housing Element update, I think that that makes sense. We'll have some sense. Where the Housing Element update is going at the end of this year and early next year. And so based on that, might give us more information to respond to your request.
But will that? Be detrimental to folks who might be bringing applications in for projects? Will they still be able to apply for funding?
Well, I think with.
Project in and.
I think with no policy in place, we're open to anybody asking us and saying, hey, I'd like the money, please. And then we can, we can consider an individual project. This, I think, really is more about setting a longer term policy and and. You know, even if we give some or much or all of the money to projects before twenty twenty-three, figuring out what we'll do.
Okay, fair enough. And I did want to make a point after listening to Jim that I was considering supportive housing in a priority, not. I didn't make that clear and I'm fairly certain that we all are supportive of supportive housing. Are we? Yeah, okay. Just wanted you guys to know.
That was a primary question that I had. So I think that we've got good marching orders here. Madam Mayor, there are two more hands that are raised. I I know the comment, questions from residents has been closed. It's up to you if you'd like to reopen that.
Quick ones, Kristy.
Thank you. I really do care about this topic. Question on. Doing longer term planning than eight-year planning so we can think further out into the future. For our town and what we want it to look like in twenty years, twenty-five years, you know, Bay Area. Is planning out to twenty fifty, emissions is planning out to. Twenty thirty, thirty-five, and we're, are we just going to plan to? Eight years ahead, or are we gonna look further ahead? And then kind of backtrack it as to how we want the city to look. That's one question. I encourage long-term planning and. Possibly with a consultant planning, not just kind of, oh, well, they want to do it here, so let's do it. Or they want to do it there, let's do it. I I think overall plan is great. And then I do have a question on hospice houses. If my parents passed in Bruins House in Alamo. And it was a house like a five-bedroom house. And somebody donated it and it really served a need for hospice in the area. In a humane way and not. As part of a hospital, you don't have to go to a hospital. So how would that fit in if somebody donated their house? Would it count as part of this? And Bruins, it's B R U N S, if you want to look into it.
Thanks, Kristy. I will look into that and get back to you privately. I kind of remember somebody wanting to do a hospice here in the last sixteen years, but. I may also have just imagined that. Rita?
Hi, as we are, thanks for taking my question, discussing plans of different things that we can do. Hi, as we are, thanks for taking my question, discussing plans of different things that we can do. I'm still stuck on the whole Blue Oaks and getting some kind of closure on that. If that money was to be used for that project, then perhaps it still has something open for that project. If there's any way, I I'm not sure how the public can find out what's the answer after the research. But I just want to make sure as plans are being made that that's still an open item. And interested to see if if there was something that was promised and perhaps just not completed at that time. Thank you.
We will definitely check that out. Right, Cara? And.
Madam Mayor, may I make a suggestion both to the last two speakers? If you, it would be very helpful if you could email us your specific questions, email them to me directly and we'll we'll either get back to you offline or incorporate them into the future conversations. Thanks.
Right. Then I believe that we are finished with this one.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Great conversation. It's very helpful.
Okay, what's the last? Okay, then I think we have a oral report from the, does anybody need a break? I'm looking at Jeff often. He does.
Five minutes, sure.
Okay, we do a five. Oh, look at Jeremy smiling with his teeth missing. Look at that. Wow, so good.
I was finally not self-conscious and now right back to where I was. Thank you very much.
Jeremy gets, Jeremy gets five for fighting, so.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll be back here at eight fifty-seven.
Okay. All right. Item number nine, oral report by planning and building director. Update. Laura.
Hi, thanks. Good evening. And so back in May of this year, staff brought forward some staffing proposals for the council to consider. So that included a recruitment for a senior planner and then some feedback that we integrated into the budget process. So we wanted to give you an update on how those items have been going and let you know kind of the different, what's been going on in the staffing and the different categories in the planning and building department. So relatively brief, but just wanted to make sure that everybody stays updated. So when we talked about this in May, we were talking about kind of the changing staffing pattern and the number of people that we had working in the department and how that had changed. And so as a reminder, in the pre-pandemic sort of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen timeframe, we had four full-time staff, town employees, and two part-time contract employees. And at that time, you know, we were busy, we couldn't take on a lot of extra work, but that was a pretty sufficient staffing pattern to keep the normal planning and building functions going. And as we've discussed in a lot of detail, a lot of things have changed since then, both related to the pandemic project activity and now advanced planning work related to the housing element. So right now we have four full-time staff. And then in terms of consultant staff, we have eight part-time consultants working for us now. So a total of twelve people in the planning and building department. And those part-time consultants vary from five hours a week up to about twenty hours a week, depending on the different things that they're working on. So it is a lot more faces and names and people that are contributing to planning and building and code enforcement services on a regular. So kind of specifically getting into that. In regards to general customer service, kind of breaking that out as a little bit of a separate category. We're continuing to see high levels of needs from our residents related to customer service. So you might recall that when we talked about this in May, we were talking about what seemed to be increased needs of residents that seemed to be pandemic-related. People interested in making changes to their homes, looking for additional service. And really just, you know, some of our staff members are really kind people and wanting to have nice, long conversations with kind planning and building staff. And it's been a real opportunity to provide service that people really needed during the pandemic. But you can imagine that's also time-consuming. And so people have had a lot of different types of needs. And it turns out one of those needs is planning and building service. So we are seeing that kind of continued increase in communications and expectations that we were seeing when we talked about this back in May. We're also seeing quite a bit of time that we're spending on customer service related to ADUs. So this is good because we have a lot of interest in ADUs right now. But as you know, we adopted a complex ADU ordinance. And we did that to be able to address the state mandated regulations and try to make them appropriate for our context. And so a lot of work went into creating the best possible ADU ordinance to address all those things. But it also created a very complex ordinance with a lot of steps between fire safety, geologic safety, different unit types, state exceptions, putting all of these different things together, as well as the fire safety checklist that we created. So it is taking quite a bit of time in terms of general customer service for our staff to be able to answer those questions and to be working through those new rules. So it's going well, but it's taking time. Specifically on the planning side. All of the council is aware and probably many members of the public that we had a successful recruitment for senior planner. So Adrian Smith joined us at the end of July. This is a major accomplishment for our town to recruit a qualified senior planner. So we're very excited that she joined the team. She has been working since she's been with us almost exclusively on housing element-related work so far. Getting trained on our approach and our background, as well as the laws in the context. So she is leading the day-to-day work of all of the logistics and planning that go into that. And then she and I are working very closely on the big picture related to the housing element. She'll also be having a lead responsibility related to the safety element and bringing forward those safety considerations into the housing element process. So we expect her to be probably a hundred percent on housing element and safety element for at least the next few months as we're getting those things up and running. And then we'll see if she has capacity to work on other things within the department. So when we originally talked about hiring a senior planner, we thought maybe about eighty-five percent general fund and maybe fifteen percent projects. So that could still turn out to be the case, or it might actually be, we'll need her on general fund. Then council priorities, housing element, safety element, and things like that. So I'll let you know how that's going, but we're really happy with the work that she's doing with us so far. And then in terms of contract planners, we had a contract planner with us from before the pandemic that he was able to increase his hours with us. So he has gone from eight hours to twenty hours per week. So that's been really great because he was already trained. Then we've brought in another contract planner to work on routine, single-family home projects. And now he's at twenty hours per week as well. And so his training is going well, so he's just about ready to start taking projects to ASCC and doing general customer service. So we've dramatically increased our general planning, everyday counter-hour kind of service and initial appointments, pre-applications, and catching up on the backlog of ASCC projects. We also have two consultant planners that are working specifically on high-level complex projects. So we have one consultant planner that's working on the Stanford Faculty Housing Project. And we have another consultant planner that's working on the Neely CUP Amendment Project. And then our last consultant planner is filling in where needed, basically. So if we've got some kind of range of projects, she's very experienced and can handle the the full range of things. So she's got a variety, just a variety of smaller projects and a couple larger projects as well. So that gives you a sense of kind of things have gotten a little bit more complicated in the planning department to keep all of those pieces moving. But we think right now we've got a lot of the right players in the right positions. And we're monitoring that to see what the volume of projects is going to be and to see if we've got enough resources. So the good news is that we had set kind of a goal in planning that we would reduce the queue and get back to quicker processing timelines in the fall. That was the goal that I I set out for the staff. And we have, I think, really increased our timeliness. We're not quite to pre-pandemic type levels, but we're much closer. So there are some routine things that people were waiting two to three weeks for in the height of the pandemic, that now that wait time is down to about a week. So we've really seen a big improvement there. And so we'll continue to keep an eye on it and see if we've got the right resources. And then turning to building. You'll recall that we created in the budget some funding for a building official on a contract basis, just a few hours a week. And that has worked out very well. That has been a big improvement and change to the way that we're coordinating the most complex projects and answering questions and bringing in code interpretations. So even that few hours per week that Ron LaFrance is providing to us is really beneficial. You'll recall he's a previous building official in Menlo Park and brings a lot of experience and range. That's really helping us with problem solving. In terms of building permits, you might remember when we were looking at the numbers, we were seeing increases of twenty or twenty-five percent above what we were doing back in twenty eighteen. And so this volume is really significant for us. So we're still having some challenges with the volume of building permits that we're that we're processing. And so this is something that I'm I'm watching closely in terms of seeing what the technician's capacity is to process these applications and and making sure that we've got the right resources. So we're continuing to monitor and evaluate this. I do want to kind of collect a little bit more data. So to to see if some of the trends from the pandemic were really pandemic-related or if this is a general upswing in our permit activity. So we're going to watch that permit data and see how those trends are going. And then as we're looking at these things and we we kind of started to talk about it a little bit last time, but it might be appropriate sometime soon, not immediate, to look at our building permit fees and make sure that our building permit fees are capturing the true cost of providing these services, including, you know, technician's time, building official time and across the board. So it's not something that staff is programmed or or proposing yet, but it is something that we're thinking about and maybe necessary as we move forward with these higher volumes. Make sure we're capturing those those funds and cost recovery. And then for code enforcement, you'll recall that you authorized money for a code enforcement officer on a contract basis. Again, just a few hours per week. That has also been going very smoothly. And so he's an experienced code enforcement officer and he has upgraded kind of our approach to code enforcement and been able to monitor, track, and keep records in a way that we haven't been able to before. And he's getting cases closed and providing follow-up. So this has really been significant for us. And anytime that you do more code enforcement activity, you kind of brace for complaints. And I'm very happy to say that I haven't been getting them. And so I think if Jeremy was getting them, he would let us know. But I think that the approach to the code enforcement has been successful and consistent with our ethos. So we're planning on kind of continuing with that same level of light code enforcement, nothing too heavy, but just keep basic things going and make sure we can always address any health and safety concerns. Because that's really important kind of core mission, to be able to respond to those in a timely fashion. So good, good results on on code enforcement. And I also wanted to mention that when there's an increase in planning and building activity, you're also going to have an increase in engineering activity. So as you know, this is Howard's shop, not mine. But it is something that we're monitoring together and thinking about, do we have the right resources there as well? To make sure that we can support all of this development activity that's happening and make sure we're getting all the right reviews and getting those in a timely fashion. So that's something we're also continuing to keep our eyes on and we're working on together. So in terms of what happens next, what I would recommend is we staff will continue to look at some of this data and some of the trends and monitor what's happening and how this how staff are doing and the processing timelines, particularly in the planning division. And then I think we would come back to the council maybe in early twenty twenty-two with an additional update and update you on some of that data. Let you, give you another, have another check-in on these initiatives and make sure that you feel like we're on track. And then we can see how those additional resources have really been working out for more like a six-month time period and then see if we need to make any adjustments. I do think depending on how things go, but I I do think right now projecting forward, we might have more needs around general customer service. So I'll be thinking about how we can make adjustments to do that. But I do anticipate that something that we may need additional funds for, but that I'll continue to monitor and and update you as we move forward. So that's the update that I have for you. I'd be happy to take any questions or any additional feedback that you have. So that concludes what I have to say. Thank you.
You're muted, Marion.
No, that was on purpose. Impressive. Does anyone have a question? Sarah?
Yeah, I just was wondering, Laura, I'm sure it's it's hard to say with specificity, but do you have a sense of how long it's going to take you to get back to pre-pandemic levels?
I mean, it's. It's hard to say. We're making a lot of progress right now. And so the two consultant planners that are each twenty hours a week, I think we'll be able to handle almost half of the projects. So Dylan, our assistant planner, can handle about half, and then they would handle about half. And if that works, then I think we'll be, you know, back to pre-pandemic levels in a few more months would be my best estimate.
Laura, Sarah, I would also add that it is. I I I think that's more on the planning side than the building side. We we simply have just seen more building activity than we would have anticipated. So that is, I I wouldn't anticipate that changing in the short term. Just given that the, that we're we're not sure what that's about. We we don't really know yet what's caused such the, such an increase. Laura and I were talking about it earlier today. And that's not a function of planning projects being being in the queue and then moving forward because many things just require a building permit at town, don't need planning permits. So that's an area that I think will take longer.
Okay. And so basically, part of it too is that you feel like you have the right team in place, but some of them are still kind of getting up to speed to their full efficiency level, so to speak, as well.
Yeah, we're still, we're still training the new consultant planner and just trying to refine our current system and make sure our current system is working. And then I'll have a little bit more information about where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. All right. One question from the public, David Cardinal.
Sure, super quick. I I think this is great. I'm curious what enforcement, what the code enforcement is doing or which parts of the code we're enforcing. I I think it's great, but we have a lot of code that we don't always enforce. Well, thank you.
You want to take that, Laura, or do you want to?
Oh, I I can start and you can add anything that you think. The range of things for code enforcement varies quite a bit. Some of them are relatively small, like lighting. Some of them are construction without permits. Some of them are a little bit larger. We do have a few co-enforcement issues where people did pretty significant additions or remodels onto their homes without proper permits. So we're looking into those types of things. So it's kind of that full range of chickens to unpermitted construction.
Great, thank you.
Rita.
Well, it seems, thanks for taking my question, but it seems that with you know, the pandemic and people being home more and the children being home more, people are looking around their homes to see what they can improve. And they get all these ideas from watching all these home improvement shows. And this is a beautiful town and, you know, some some homes need to be upgraded. And people finally have the time instead of flying around with their busy lives and putting things off. And so this is a good time to do those things. But that being said, I live on West Ridge. And starting at about five forty-five AM, big trucks come up the road. I know they're not supposed to be working until eight AM. And I appreciate all the work that was done when my house was being built, but I've. But I've uh talked to Howard, I've sent letters and um you know, there've been ideas to go on, but do we have someone that drives around? And there was a huge uh cement truck that came up about seven fifteen and went back down at eight-ten. I I'm sure they started working before eight AM. And uh, it's just that those changing of the gears and having to close windows because people are coming up the hill starting at five forty-five AM. Is there a process? Is there someone to check um on this? Do we have the capacity to have um some something in place to do that? Howard suggested that I stand out there and I make uh find out license plates and it'll be me and the mountain lion out there early in the morning, looking at license plates and uh company names. And so there's gotta be a better solution than that. And thank you for um for your answer.
Jeremy, is that a new
Yeah, I can I can take that one. Uh, like uh virtually every city uh that I know of in California, we have a reactive code enforcement or code compliance uh functionality that what that means is that we rely on um residents or others to contact us and let us know what the issue is, and then we will go uh out investigate and enforce if necessary. Uh, I maybe the larger cities have a react uh proactive force that are driving around, uh, but we we don't have that capability. I I don't imagine that we will ever have a capability a- as such. Um, I would also expect that if we develop such capabilities that there would be a pretty significant backlash on uh allocation of town resources and looking for problems. Um, because I've 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 heard that kind of commentary in other communities that I've uh worked in. Um, so we do in the end rely on residents letting us know what the issue is and giving us as much information as possible so we can follow up. The construction uh traffic is is a incredibly challenging issue. Um, we we know that Rita, you and I have talked about that um at times. Um, and the challenge for us is knowing where those vehicles are going. And if and if we know, we will go talk to them. And we have, we have shut down projects because of noise issues and otherwise. Um, in the past, would probably do that again. Thanks.
Okay, Sarah. Oh, mute.
A question more for clarification on this rule. Is it? I know obviously you can't start work before eight o'clock, but are there rules against construction trucks being on like a public road before eight o'clock? It seems like that's a harder thing to manage. So I guess it's a question about what the role is.
Jeremy or Laura?
Laura, you want to take that one?
Your your point is exactly right. It's very difficult to manage people driving vehicles on the public road. Um, so we do try to, we we work with the contractors pretty regularly to talk to them about trying to time um the trucks and the deliveries to not um arrive early. And so sometimes people are going to sit there and wait for the construction time to start. So we've been trying to address that through um kind of more friendly outreach. Um, when we know for sure that work is occurring and people are arriving and actually doing work at a specific site, then when we have a lot more authority to enforce, and we have done that, as Jeremy mentioned, and we've you know, done things like a one-day stop work order. Um, and and then had meetings to to talk to the contractors, to talk to all the subs. But a a big part of this is that um subcontractors that work on these jobs and getting the message from the main contractor into the subs.
Right. No, I get it. I get it for all of that. And the eight o'clock rule, I guess I just am thinking how we as a town or as a council could prevent uh a car from driving on a public road. It seems like that's out of our control.
Other than Yeah.
Trying to be, you know, use our influence and ask and stuff like that, but it's not like we can restrict people using public roads.
That's correct. That it would be very difficult to do. So as Laura was saying, if if we know that there's a uh construction project that has um folks um getting to the site early and making noise and the like, we'll have those conversations, but the enforcement from the to and from, we certainly encourage people to come uh right around the time that they're supposed to be starting work because of those those types of impacts, but it that's hard to be hard to enforce.
Thanks.
All right, uh, I think that's Carolyn.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, this is Caroline and I have a question for Laura. Laura, can you give examples of you? You mentioned there's an increased demand for general services and what would these services be?
Um, general, uh, I'm sorry, did you want me to answer now or did you want to continue with your comments?
No, if you can answer now and then I have an additional comment depending on how you respond. Thank you.
So it would be general customer service around things like um considering putting your home up for sale and and getting permit records, um considering purchasing a property and looking into the development regulations of the town, the policies, the process for building permits, the process for planning applications. Um, we do a lot more public document requests um than we used to. So that is a general customer service thing that is that is up quite a bit. Um, so a lot of the things that are associated with buying and selling properties and then improving properties, all those people have initial conversations with us that are not projects yet. They're just general customer service.
And to
Thank you.
By that, if I may, I'm sorry, Caroline, to amplify some of what uh Laura's that that um it's not reimbursable. We don't charge people for coming in and asking us questions. Um, there's no uh there isn't a tool to do that. Um, we are able to start doing that in the pre-application process, but prior to that, people are entitled and we're happy to answer any questions that they have, and that can be a considerable amount of time. Um, so that's uh one of the areas that Laura's speaking to. Sorry to interrupt you, Caroline.
No, that's okay. That it's a great conversation. Um, based on personal experiences now or what's going on on Palmer Lane, um, I asked Howard yesterday um if you guys meet on a regular basis, and I was told you meet weekly. So based on that information, I don't understand how a big project has been approved um without uh understanding or addressing the issues that we've had with our water pressure uh on Palmer Lane and um and all the other stuff that that needs to be done before actually a project can start. So I was told um I have addressed the problems uh way before the project started in the in the last couple of months, and I thought everything was under control unless until then we discovered all the water issues.
Caroline, if I if I can ask just to in order to um keep the this meeting focused on the the larger issues, feel free to give me an email tomorrow, send me an email tomorrow about this specific uh topic. Um, and I'm happy to try to get answers for you.
Yeah, but but answer me one question. Do you guys come together on a weekly basis? And you discuss all the projects that are ongoing? And then discuss what the public need is or what 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 issues need to be addressed? Because you have a paving
Mine excuse Caroline, your time is up. And that is something that you need to off-line. Thank you very much. Christie.
Sorry, Christie, there you go.
Um. Yeah, I have a question. Um, what are the two larger developments coming to our town next year? It seems that Jeremy and our mayor know, but I think maybe the public would want to know is my first question. My second question is for larger mixed use or mixed family developments. Would it be reasonable to expect a higher development fee rather than a developer uh overseeing uh and as of right projects such as an ADU? Are are the fees changing for larger developments is my question? Thank you.
Marian. Uh, until an applicant files formal um the formal applications and paperwork, we're not at liberty to discuss specific projects that would be um then irresponsible as it relates to the privacy of someone asking a series of questions before that they've um they've made a a formal decision to to move forward. I'm I'm not sure that I understand the latter question. Um, and if I could uh ask uh Christie, feel free to email me tomorrow and I'll I'm happy to try to answer that for you unless the council wants us to
Does Laura know the answer?
Yeah, I think generally speaking, if there are multifamily developments that would be permitted at some future time in the town, yes, there would typically be more fees associated with that than with your example, definitely more than an ADU.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. So does anyone have any comments? This was just a little update, no action required, correct? You're doing a great job. I I mean, it's been an amazing improvement since we were all slowed down from the pandemic and I'm I'm really proud of you, Laura. And all the work you've done and all the work that the planning department's doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chris, hands up.
Yeah, I I'd say I I I really appreciate these updates that you've been giving us, Laura, and and um Jeremy, I would suggest I I mean, obviously, planning and building is one of the sort of major components of what goes on in town hall. So the updates are particularly important for there for those, and we've had transitions there. Um, but having, you know, regular updates from other departments might also be useful. Um, and they they wouldn't necessarily take as long as building and planning, but just to give us uh, you know, update on not just the financial side, but how things are going and how people are settling in and what shifting workloads look like and things is it's a useful insight, I think, for us and how things are running.
Be happy to uh have a regular program of uh staff coming forward and
Attending through, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll uh we'll start programming that in into the roll forward. Uh, I'm I'm just gonna nominate Howard right now because why not? He's not here and I get to do that because I'm town manager. He'll be next.
Okay.
So if I if I could, I would like to also say thank you to the council. Um, I recognize that it's no small thing um to come and ask for these resources and to have these very good conversations about it about how we're providing services and and meeting our residents' needs. So thank you for this tone that you set in these conversations that that we have. It's really helpful to me um in my day-to-day work, and I appreciate your support of of me and my staff.
Thank you for everything. And I I've underestimated how complicated things have gotten there. So you're you're managing a very complicated situation very well. Thanks.
And if we're all in person again, wow, it's gonna be crowded in those cubicles. Alrighty. Council liaison committee and regional agency reports. Who would like to go first? Craig.
I have none.
What did you say? I have none? Oh, lucky. Okay, Sarah.
Mute. All right, I'm muting. Um, I think I just had two. I had uh creative uh creative arts. And really that was or cultural arts, and that was just um continuation of planning for the PV Live Revive, which um seems to be moving along well by everything that I've heard. Um, the other um committee meeting that we had was we had our second housing element committee meeting, and this was kind of the the first one that got into some of um the meat of of things. Um, I just wanted to share a little bit of detail about the agenda items that were covered um just for all of you and for the record. Um, you know, we reviewed the goals of the committee and really kind to to reiterate that the purpose of of uh, you know, the the goal of of the effort is to update the housing element in a way that meets the state mandate and the reigning numbers. And so there was a recognition of agreement that that's the goal um of that committee. Um, and that you know, there was discussion about how this means that we need to do planning in the housing element to enable that level of building, that it doesn't mean necessarily that the things are being built or that the town are is necessarily building these buildings. Um, I just wanted to mention that because I think for the record, you know, there are people in the community that are a little confused about that. Um, we also had a really nice discussion about making sure the housing element, um, you know, is consistent with the town values and um appreciation um for our natural environment. We also talked a little bit about um the importance of, you know, respectful decorum and all of these meetings, because we know you know, it's a it's a it's a there's a lot of passions about um these topics. Um, and then we kind of got into the 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 need of the agenda where we reviewed um the structure of the housing element and progress that had been made since um the current housing element was um crafted in twenty fifteen. Um, we had a a really nice discussion um led by by Lori and Lauren Adrian um based on updates to our demographics. So information they had gotten from the census and whatnot kind of showing the trends um dem- demographically and in terms of housing in town. Um, so that was really interesting for the P V here. Um, and then we had a discussion, as Jeff mentioned, where we talked a little bit about um what we shared in detail, actually all of the income levels um for affordable housing. Um you know, categories. And um I know a lot of this information is going to be posted over time on the website and and um so I think, you know, that income level thing is a is a perfect example of things that we could probably post in that section, because I think they'll they'll be continued to have questions on that. So um I thought the meeting was really well-run and um productive and um I just thought the team did a great job. So that's it.
Thanks, Sarah. Who would like to go next? John?
I had an emergency services council meeting last week. Couple of interesting things. There was a discussion about uh the resolution to grant authorized uh designees status for um for cert- certain emergency service workers. Uh, there was some technicality in how they're they're um solidified every time they go out to to serve. And they're making it making it so that they would be able to be certified by the uh EMC staff um directly, so they wouldn't have to come back and recertify every time or get get sworn again over. Hey, that was a little bit of housekeeping. The um apparently there will be a county mass evacuation center open on October fourth. Uh, it may have something to do with um with the third vaccinations. Uh, that was not been decided yet, obviously. The most interesting portion was a discussion of the zone haven evacuation training that uh brings together all of the the fire and sheriffs and uh hazmat teams from the entire county to uh participate in setting up regional plans for evacuation on a wider basis than just a single town at a time, which makes a lot of sense, given the these the way wildfires and earthquakes might occur. Um, the um they've broken up the county into several zones, uh actually call them sectors. Now, Portillo Valley and Woodside are in sector E and the and the coast is A, B, C, and D. Um, they're they're kind of glomerations of larger areas than our single uh uh our town by itself in order to make sure that they can evacuate the more difficult parts of the county. So the county, the coast has a lot of dense wooded areas as as we do. Um, and so they're working on that and starting on the coast to set up these these plans over um let's see, they didn't give a timeline on it yet, but they're starting on the coast and working their way over toward the bayside. The bayside itself done the the more developed areas is is uh gonna be last in this process because they're not in quite as high a danger area, that's right. Then there's a uh new county drought task force that's been working um with with the cities and the PUC. Discuss the sustained effects of the drought. Um, and there's a new grant has been approved by the Bay Area Air Quality Management Group for uh sixty fairly large air purifiers to use in shelters and uh those will be determined uh by by each jurisdiction. That's that was basically it. That was the only one I had.
Okay. And Jeff?
Thank you. Uh, I think Sarah covered the housing element committee quite well. Um, I had uh I had, last week I had two commission meetings. The planning commission on Monday. Reviewed two projects. I think the most noteworthy thing that came out of that was on one of the projects, there was a. A difference of opinion on whether the applicant had really truly sort of shared their plans with a neighbor. And and the there was a there was a fairly, there was a there was a reasonable solution, which is there actually was time to schedule sort of brief site visit. For the A C C to go back and look at the story poles on site and reconsider the impacts on that neighbor who had like seen the plans maybe two days before the meeting. The upshot of it is that I think staff has decided maybe we need to start. Policing the share the plans with your neighbor provision a little more actively and sort of actually. Verify that applicants have actually talked to their neighbors before the meeting so that there's just not any kind of last minute surprises like what appeared to have happened in this one or these two projects. But that was that was A C C. Wednesday, planning reviewed two separate lot line adjustments, one up on wayside. Couple of small parcels that had been sort of foreclosed over the town decades ago, got amalgamated to one larger parcel for a project. And then there was a kind of funny one over on Grove Drive where there was a landlocked parcel. That had been subdivided a long time ago and they basically swapped land with their neighbor so they could have a driveway. It was sort of just, it was pretty straightforward, but it was sort of nice to see the neighbors work together to sort of trade some land. Because they had to keep both parcels above one acre and they were both right at the limit. So they they had to. Kind of driveway into the new the the landlocked lot and then a little strip off the side of it to keep the other lot at one acre. So. But that that all worked out well, so. Those are just double checking, but I believe those are my two. To report. And nature and science, Paul Heiple did his gall talk last night and I was not able to attend. I don't know if anybody attended. I I haven't actually gotten feedback on. It was Monday. I haven't gotten feedback on how well attended it was, but they wanna they wanna, I think they're gonna take a little break, but I think they want to continue with these talks they've been doing. So they're they're remaining tomorrow, but they're doing some good work. That's all.
Thanks. Okay, I had a C CAG meeting on the ninth. First thing we did was we recognized a longstanding employee who left, Matt Fabry. Who was the stormwater slash green infrastructure guy and he was. An absolute guru in that in that area and I was really sad to see him go. He took a job in San Mateo. As the. Not the dep- the direct, is it deputy director, Jeremy of Public Works? It's the guy below. Public Works guy.
That's number two.
Yeah, he's just such a, he's a really good guy, isn't he, Jeremy? Okay, then we had a presentation on construction of the express lanes project, which I, you know, see. Probably four times now. Because this project, again, we're aiming to open the lanes in December. Ledge was old news. I mean, since since the meeting. A lot of bills have have been signed. Most notable nine and ten, S P nine and ten. And the other bills that were of concern to C CAG tend to be more transportation bills. One is the seamless bill and it's turned into a two year bill. That's A B six two nine. Then, as seems like every single organization is doing this, C CAG is doing their equity assessment. So they've got. Staff training, they've got historical perspectives led by a consultant. Exploring the definition of equity, discussing their programs in historically disadvantaged communities. Draft definition of equity, go through every committee. And what else? And then there were some other ones, draft update of the congestion management plan land use. Impact analysis analysis program T D M policy. And I thought there was another one like that, draft STIP program. I can't remember what STIP is, but it's where we get a lot of our money. Got sixteen million of which three million is COVID response and the three million will be programmed. I think it's programmed for. It's for the future. It starts in twenty twenty two, but these are big projects and there was a list of the recommended projects.
That's a state transportation improvement program.
Thank you. And and then Sean, our new executive director. Spoke, this was his first meeting. He's exploring options for a room with a zoom. That's the hybrid model, right? I think it is. They're going to transition to action minute summaries. I think that was about it. Okay, then there was an express lanes, beginning of express lanes, we had a meeting on the tent. Okay, we approved a agreement to. Extend the policy program management services contract. What else? Another, this was the equity program implementation update. Now we're getting into the finer points. Find eligibility, determine admin costs, develop the program eval. And I think what they're trying to do is they're trying to pump a little bit more money into the different. Reloaded. Toll tags or the clipper cards. And and they're talking about how they're gonna get the benefits to the community. They're gonna work through core service agencies. So let's see what else. Then there was an update on the B A F A and B A T A agreements. Then there was the branding update. We chose a logo and. All that sort of stuff and you will see that when you drive on. And what else? And they're also, we also talked about the toll commencement south of. We had a closed session with no reportable action. Our own equity committee met on the fourteenth. One member has resigned. They finally, finally approved their charter. And they would like to be called race inequity rather than equity. They will have a table at the picnic with some interactive activities. And some books. Oh, there is a committee of committees for the housing element process. And so every committee has to choose a liaison and our liaison will, oh wait, no, no. That's that's the sustainability. It's all blurring together. We had to get a new liaison for the housing. Element committee because Karen Vatcha resigned. So the new liaison is Andrew Pierce. And the alternate is Lucy Neely. They did a draft budget. And we didn't get to the last items, which were. Of great interest to me. One said neighborhood watch signs. And I'm not sure what that's about, but I guess I'll find out next meeting. And one was about the town seal and I did say, what about the town seal? Well, if you look at the town seal, it's Portola, you know, the explorer, the Spanish guy who. Came here and as we all know, he was, I think he might have been one of the instigators of the mission. System which enslaved native peoples. So there will be some some talk about perhaps changing our seal. Did I lose anything? Leave leave anything out, John?
I think that was it, yeah.
It was a good meeting. It was a. They've really been struggling and they're finally, they're finally starting to move. Sustainability. They are meeting at night now. They have a new member, Scott Elrod, who has, I think, a lot of, I think it was huge engineering background. And what was interested in sustainability since he was in middle school. Walt wasn't there. Stefan had to run the meeting. Let's see. Brandy gave her update about she's working on the S P thirteen eighty three issue. She. Said the software program is being previewed in Woodside. This will help do all the stuff we're gonna have to do to comply with that new law. The climate action plan and green building ordinance still moving along slowly. Subcommittees, Lovey's book group. She has picked the top twelve books that she that are she's recommending. That will be at the picnic, a handout with those books. They will have a table. The blackout protection, they will have a flyer there. And what else? Oh, what they want to do is actually they're buying a Yeti battery, you know, it's pretty big and a little. Solar panel and the idea would be that people could loan, could borrow it. So we still, Jeremy, we still need to talk to the library to see if they will house it there and check it out. And what else? I think that's it. Oh, that's the one where every committee has to pick someone to serve on the committee. Of what is it? Committee of committees for the housing element. What's it called?
You got it. Very clever government name.
Yeah, it will be Rebecca Flynn and Scott Elrod. Library, always a pleasure. Final approval 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 of the budget, seventy two million dollars. Quite the discussion with our member from Woodside, which. Was a little bit controversial. About what's the most important thing. I don't even know how to describe what the guy was talking about, but it was. It took up a really lot of time. They gave a summer learning report. This was called Inspiring Summers. It's the Big Lift Program. They worked in seven elementary districts. They increased the length of the program. They had ninety one percent attendance, at least one point gain in early literacy for the children. Two point gain in early math for the children. Five hundred and nine families attended the entire series. It what they produced the most wonderful video and. We were supposed to each get. A link to it so that you guys could watch it. It's really, really nice. One of the reasons that the program was so successful was timing. Stanford has this teacher training program. And they were, a lot of them were poised, ready to go into the classroom, but they couldn't because of COVID. So they were able to snatch those. Stanford teachers up for the program. Okay, what else? Director's report, we are in phase four of the new normal. Focus is now on programming. We're doing a lot of storytimes outdoors, one on one tutoring. The plan is to increase hours or fully restore hours to pre-pandemic levels. What else? The number one thing people are asking for is in-person programs, especially for children. And then there was a. Having to do with personnel. And then Jeremy and Brandy and I met with Dawn. Was that today? Wow, I have no idea when it was. That's great. So A M I are the new smart water meters. As you know, this was eight years in the making and they're finally working on it. Cal Water will do two projects, one in Los Altos, one in Bear Gulch. Most will be here in Bear Gulch. They are assembling a team to install the meters, but it's taking a lot of time to find the qualified people because. You know, the pay is not the highest and they are a union shop. Brandy asked if all our meters will be replaced. If it's a new meter, no, it will not be replaced. They will just. Put this endpoint program into it. If it's an old meter, it will be replaced. The hope is that we'll at least get one meter in the ground by the end of the year. And we will continue to to check in with them. The next meeting is November fifteen. Anything else to add there, Jeremy?
Nothing at my end.
Okay, so let's move on to Jeremy's report.
Thank you very much. My report is a bit lengthy this evening. And no, in no particular order here. Later this week, I'm gonna have lunch with Sheriff Bolanos. We had to reschedule it from an August date, so I'm looking forward to. Seeing him. It's been a little while. Today I had lunch with the relatively new general manager and the town's appointment to the San Mateo County. Mosquito and Vector Control District. Ray Ray Williams is the town's appointment and Brian Weber, who's the brother of our own Scott Weber. Runs the mosquito vector district. So it was great catching up with them. They do some really amazing work that's pretty underappreciated or understood, frankly. What Brian told me today was that on a per capita basis, they get more calls from Portola Valley than any other city. Which was fascinating, given. That other cities have very similar sets of issues. Along the mountains. And on the coast. One of the areas that we talked about was how do we help them continue to promote the great activities that they do? So there's a variety of things that I think you'll start to see in in our newsletters and otherwise in the coming weeks and months. Ask them to come to a council meeting in January where they can talk about what they do as well. So that will be something to look forward to. As you probably know, we had a new police captain for about two days. Who then was immediately reassigned to cover. A. Health-related absence on the coast. So Mark Myers, who was with us for a few months, is back. Will know more how long that is, but my guess is four to six months. Mark was, in the short time he was here, it's great working with him. So delighted they picked him again. To come back. I recently met with. The headmaster at the priory. And Father Martin and asked if Father Martin might be interested in attending a future council meeting. To share positive words of collaboration and the like with the community. And he readily agreed. Was it an idea that actually came from the mayor and the vice mayor? I was very happy to take your joint message to. To Father Martin. I I think he felt as that we all do that a little bit of civility and. And and the like can go a long way. And we've been reaching out to some of our other. Leaders in the religious community as well and it's been a very positive. Set of responses from people. So in the future, I think they'll see more of that folks just saying a few nice words at the start of our meet our meetings. One of the best meetings I've taken in a long time was between our farmer's market operator. The Portola Valley School District and the library on an idea of how we can take. All the great things that these different organizations do and combine them into a. An event for kids. We coalesced around the idea of having a kids movie night. That would, so for example, we pick a movie that has. Cloudy with a chance of meatballs. We do something at the farmer's market that has something to do with Italian food or meatballs. There's books related to that and then we show a movie. So I'm looking into rental of a large screen. It's actually relatively affordable to do that within the budget that we. Currently have for these activities and we want it to be a regular activity. So we're looking at December, actually, to do something. So I've contacted the chair of. The Culture Arts Committee to bring them into that conversation at this point. I wasn't sure if it was gonna go anywhere initially, but now that seems to be going somewhere. Bringing in those voices for support and sponsorship and the like. I met with my counterpart in Palo Alto. In Chicago, we had lunch a couple of weeks ago, mostly from my end was a discussion about fire mitigation work that they're doing at foothills. They're doing extensive work there and I've asked him to connect me with the folks who are managing that so we can put that on our own website. We want to build out a suite of resources, not only the ones that we have about what town is doing on these issues, but our partners as well. So folks can know. What's going on? There's a lot of really good work in this field, particularly around defensible space. So I'll make sure that that gets promoted. John Myers, who's the chair of our President Rec Committee today, shared an absolutely delightful statistic. John Myers, who's the chair of our President Rec Committee today, shared an absolutely delightful statistic. They've had, and we're, you know, with two weeks, two and a half weeks out from zots to tots, almost one hundred pre-orders for shirts. He said a a full quarter of them were kids shirts, including a number at some sort of kids extra small, which we can only guess is something like three-year-olds. So we're just delighted that the outpouring of interest in this, as you know, this is gonna be the first year in a very long time that we're gonna close the entire street. We we haven't been promoting that in that way. But we, I think we know once, when people know more about it, I think there're gonna be more folks who want to sign up for it. We've also done a call to volunteers to help ensure that folks don't drive through any of the barriers we're gonna put on the side streets. And the outpouring has been fantastic. Looking at the attendees, there's a couple of people who are attending the meeting tonight who have already volunteered. So thank you to those folks who have put their names in the hat. In early November, the town will be participating in a countywide emergency preparedness exercise. It's a tabletop. They gave it the exciting name of Golden Eagle. I'm not sure yet what the disasters that we'll be preparing for, but that will be our debut of the VOC Emergency Operations Control Software Tool. So Brandy's working up towards towards that. Last, goodness, I think it was last week, the town put up a a new suite of resources related to the Stanford Wedge Project around an FAQ. Hope everyone's been able to see that. Carrie's on vacation right now. I'd hope to report some information about viewership on that. She relatively new website and she's got the keys to to that car. So next meeting, I'll provide that to you. I had a kickoff meeting for the town's evacuation study work today with our regional partners, Woodside Fire, County OES, and the Sheriff's Office and two principals that fair and peers. It was a very productive meeting in order to start to really refine scenario planning for the effort. So that was great. They'll also be reaching out to Zone Haven. I've been speaking to their leads there about the connections between the evacuation study and how Zone Haven can support it in some capacity in the future. The final message I have is, fingers crossed, I've made an offer for the Assistant Town Manager position, having a conversation with that person on Friday, feeling very good about it. I hope to make an announcement very soon. That that concludes my report. Thank you.
Jeremy, I see a hand up over here. Let's see, Christie?
Thanks. I was just curious as to the committee of committees. What that committee will do, it's a little confusing. And you appointed Rebecca and Scott Elroy. If you could explain that a little, that would be helpful because it's for the housing element, I guess you said.
I know nothing about it. I know nothing about it. And the the committee appointed them. I did not.
I I can speak to that. Sarah, did you, your hand was raised? Did you? You're muted.
Sorry, I keep doing that. I didn't know if you wanted to answer Christie's question, but my question was, thank you so much for getting the those FAQs on the Stanford project. You know, I have noticed there's been a lot of chatter on the forum about the Stanford project and I was curious. I I think this this new resource on the website is great. I was curious if you've, I haven't seen any feedback about the FAQs or anything. Have you have you heard from people in the community about them or?
Yes, I've heard from multiple residents who've reached out and thanked us for having a resource. I also noticed that the the discussion that was happening primarily on the forum ceased right after publication of that material. So I think for a lot of people who were asking questions, this has been a really useful guide, answering questions. I think in particular, we have a section that I hear that right. We wanted to be a little colloquial and fun about it, but things that we've we've heard in community discussions, questions that that we've been asked, and I think it really did address a series of those things. Christie, the committee of committees is related to the Stanford Wedge Project. So it's an opportunity for all the committees to have essentially a joint meeting with their representatives, as the mayor pointed out, too, were picked from sustainability. All the committees will do that, that have a relationship to development projects in town where they can discuss the project and discuss the elements of the project that they have responsibilities towards making recommendations to the planning commission and council.
That's that's because of the subdivision process there.
Correct. That is, that is actually something that's talked about in the code. It's it's highly unusual. My take is also that we would have done something similar anyway, given the valuable input from the committees and also trying to manage the project from a perspective of having the reasonable amount of meetings that particularly for residents to be able to come to and hear everything at once.
And you also said that somebody resigned. I didn't catch that name and another person was appointed and I did not catch that name.
Erin Vacha resigned. Another person was appointed in her place as the liaison to the Housing Element Committee, Andrew Pierce.
Thank you. And then your report, I guess, five days ago, SB nine and ten were signed by Newsom. And I'm wondering if you can comment how the town will be dealing with some of those issues such as that I think SB nine or ten has a three-year occupancy and how will the town be monitoring that, for example? And there's lots more with those two. And I appreciate the town making some statements to educate the public on these two very important land use bills. Is there a plan to do that?
I know a plan.
I didn't hear you.
No, I know of no. Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Council Digest, September ninth. Ruth Ann Ruckey. I can't believe she's still around. She, William took piano lessons from her and he's gonna be thirty-two years old. Wow. Anyway, I thought that was a nice memo that she sent. Okay, should we move on to the next one? September sixteen. All right. Then that concludes our town council meeting. Thank you for joining us.
Good night.
See you in October.
Bye.
Good night, everyone. Thanks.